Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember King. Councilmember Green. Councilmember Thomas. Councilmember Thomas, he's here. We have five councilmembers. We have approval.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Our invocation will be led today by Elder James Simmons of Greater Zion Field Family Worship Center.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, your word says that all things work together for the good of those who love you and of those who are called according to your purpose. So today, we ask that your wisdom fall upon us afresh, oh God, that as we gather for this council meeting, we ask that you would give us clarity of thought, Father, so that so everyone can effectively undertake today's agenda. Father, we just ask that you reveal all those things to get best solutions, Father, that we may serve you, and of course, to serve your people. Point our hearts to very positive outcomes and let these favorable results and developments encourage those that are gathered here today. Father, we ask that you would help generate good strategies that are practical, that are sustainable and achievable, that best serves the citizens of this great city. Guide us toward the best directions and decisions to act as the important goals are accomplished on today. Father, we just ask for excellent solutions that allow all who serve and leave this council meeting will be inspired, they will be uplifted, and of course, will be encouraged. Father, we pray for every tier of leadership within the city of New Orleans. We ask that you allow your presence to give them understanding, to give them wisdom, and to give them discernment. And all these things, we ask in your daughter's name, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen, and thank God.
Our pledge will be led by Councilmember Jeruso.
We have approval at a minute, April 30th, 2024, special meeting, May 2nd, 2024, and May 16th, 2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll make a motion to adopt. I can get a second, please. Segmented by Councilmember Jeruso. All in favor on approval of the minutes. Need one more? Five yays, five yays, no nays. Thank you.
Special orders of business. First order of business, presentation, Executive Director of Covenant House New Orleans, Ms. Renisha Robertson, along with graduates, honoring high school graduates from the Covenant House of New Orleans.
Covenant House, if y'all want to come on up to the front table.
Well, good morning. Good morning, everyone. Good morning again.
Good morning. Good morning again.
Um, so we are here to recognize some of our Covenant House high school graduates. Uh, we wanted to say thank y'all. I mentioned it earlier, but thank you for being a great representation, uh, for the youth in this city and, uh, shattering some of those negative stereotypes that our youth often get. So we want to thank you for that. And I'll let you all introduce yourself and, uh, tell us a little, little bit about yourself and, uh, the floor is yours.
All right. Well, I'll let our graduates introduce themselves first.
Well, my name is Elijah Hogan. Since y'all already know me from the news, y'all be seeing all around. I am the valedictorian of my school, Walter L. Cohen. I'll be going to Xavier University to get a degree in graphic design.
My name is Erica Santos. Um, I was graduated-
Speak a little closer to the mic.
My name is Erica Santos. I was graduated from Voucher's College Prepory. Um, my next step is, um, phlebometers, and I will be taking, uh, the Gado Community.
My name is Michael Weigle, and I graduated, I'm graduating from the Net Central City High School, and my next step is to become a flight attendant or do modeling and skincare.
Hi, my name is Jarkayla Cobb. I am the Rights of Passage Case Manager for, um, several of the youth over at the Covenant House. I'm a New Orleans native, and I love what I do.
And good morning. I'm Renisha Robertson. I'm the Chief Executive Officer at Covenant House.
All right. Uh, so, turn it forward to, uh, Councilmember Harris.
Well, thank you all for being here. I just have some great points about Covenant House that I want to highlight. Um, you have cared for at least 420 teens, is that correct?
Uh, we can double that number.
Okay, tell me how, tell me about Covenant House. We want to know all about it.
So just in our last fiscal year, we cared for, uh, close to 700 youth in our residential programs. Um, over the last 37 years, we have provided over 35,000 nights of core services to youth who have experienced homelessness or youth who are at greatest risk for experiencing housing insecurity.
Well, tell us more. I mean, how long have you been operating? How long have you been the executive director?
We've been operating since 1987, and I think some of our council members know quite well the work of Covenant House New Orleans. Um, I've been at Covenant House the last three years, but Covenant House has a very strong legacy in the city of New Orleans and has provided essential services to youth, um, in our community for many, many years. Uh, we, at the core, provide, um, everything from emergency shelter, outreach, and respite services to youth who may be experiencing, um, unstable housing, housing insecurity, who are experiencing homelessness. Um, we provide transitional housing, which some of our youth here have, have experienced, um, where they can live with us rent-free, no expense for up to 18 to 24 months while they work towards reaching their educational goals, training, employment. We offer case management services. We offer mental health, physical health. We have a longstanding partnership with Tulane School of Medicine, um, that provides free medical services to our youth. Uh, we, we do it all for our young people, everything that they need to continue supporting them as they work towards reaching their goals.
And how can we support you, not only as a council, but our community? I know I've done sleep out at least one time, and I need to do it again. Um, but can you talk about sleep out and how, um, how other folks can support Covenant House and the mission that you're on?
Yes. So every year, we do our sleep out, which is an opportunity in November, uh, for the community to learn more about the work of Covenant House, learn more about youth homelessness. I think it's important to note that in the city of New Orleans, we know that we have, um, extreme challenges around housing stability, affordable housing. Uh, many of our residents are quite close to losing their homes, they're one paycheck away. For our young people, they're quite vulnerable. Um, and if you listen to some of their stories, you can see just how vulnerable this population is. They're also the hidden population of our homeless population, because many of them are not counted in our homeless numbers in the, in the current count, because oftentimes, their homelessness doesn't look like what we see in encampments or on the streets. They are couch surfing. They are living from family member to family member. Um, they're living in unsafe housing environments, and so for them, because they're not counted, that means we don't often get the proper resources to adequately provide the services that they need. Um, and so the work that we do is very critical. Covenant House has been the only youth, um, open intake shelter that's open 24/7. We're never closed. Uh, a young person can show up at our doors anytime, day or night, to avail themselves of our services, and we've been doing that for 37 years. We've never closed. Um, it's critically important that we support these young people. They are fully capable, as you can see with our valedictorian, um, and our other graduates, that this works. When we support our young people, when we offer them open, loving arms, when we support them, when we hold them accountable, uh, when we're with them every step of the way, they can accomplish anything they set their minds to. And so that is what we need from the council, the continued support. That's what we need from our citizens, um, to paint the narrative that these young people are important to us. They're important to the future of this city.
Well, we are just incredibly proud of the work that you do, and we're more proud of the graduates, uh, that are here before us. And I know there are some other graduates, some from, uh, Booker T. Washington in my district. I know Cohen's in my district, Manette's in my district, so I'm very proud. I'm so excited that y'all are here. Um, but I know that the other council members have things to say as well.
All right, Councilmember Moreno. Yes, Moreno.
Thank you. Uh, thank you all so much for being with us. Congratulations to, uh, the graduates. And Mr. Hogan, from what I understand, you had almost a 4.0, is that correct?
Yes. My overall GPA for that school is a 3.93 overall.
Amazing. Congratulations to you. And thank you, of course, to Covenant House for all the tremendous work that you do. Um, Councilmember Harris covered a lot of ground on the services that you all provide, but one of the, um, issues that I know that you all are very focused on as well deals with trafficking. Can you talk about that?
Yes, absolutely. For the last close to, uh, decade, Covenant House has been a leader in addressing human trafficking, both sex and labor trafficking among, um, among our community. And not only among youth, we provide emergency services as well to any survivor of human trafficking. We also lead the Greater New Orleans Human Trafficking Task Force in partnership with the Orleans Parish DA's office. So we provide everything from all of the supportive services that Covenant House offers all of our youth. We also lead law enforcement. We lead other service providers. We work in partnership with our service providers to ensure that all survivors of human trafficking have the support that they need on their healing journey, which is critically important, that they, that they are, um, available to receive therapeutic care, to help them with their mental health and well-being, as well as making sure that from a legal perspective, that they have access to all of the resources that they need to continue to heal and be productive citizens.
And I remember back when, um, Councilmember Morel and I were in the legislature, that's, when you all really came to the forefront of this issue, when, um, uh, First Lady Donna Edwards was really pushing on this initiative. So I, I, I remember you all being like one of the first, saying like, "We are here to help, and we are here to lead on this particular issue and helping those victims and survivors." So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Councilmember Morel. All right, Councilmember Thomas.
Uh, first of all, thank you, Councilmember, uh, Ha- Harris and Councilmember King. Uh, of course, Renisha knows my relationship, uh, with Covenant House and over the last several decades. But for the young people who are here, uh, you guys are not only examples of what you did for yourselves, but the possibilities are for all young folk. It's not matter, it doesn't matter where you start, or whether you've been knocked down. You guys are the best examples of picking yourselves up and leading the way for other kids. Uh, when you talk about human, human trafficking, Councilmember Moreno, it was Covenant House who led the way, uh, with underage workers in, in the French Quarter, uh, in, in that area. It had not been for the work of the board and the staff there, you would not have had the crackdown on kids. There were kids in their early teens, uh, well below age, who, who were actually working in the Quarter in adult jobs and doing adult things. So, uh, it was, uh, people with this agency who actually led that way to now you at least have, some folk are mindful of, uh, that not only will there be enforcement, uh, but there may be caught. Uh, we can talk about Covenant House in the past, Renisha, but, excuse me, Ms. Robinson. Uh, but the thing that I like most about what you've done is that it's not adult down anymore. And when I've been there, when I've talked to the kids, or when I participated, you let these kids know that it's not adults preaching down or looking down, but they're citizens of our world. And of all the programs that have been there in the past that have made a difference, since you've been there, you've allowed these young people to know not only that they matter, but they matter just as much as anybody else. So yes, Covenant House has been a wonderful agency for decades, right? But the last three years at Covenant House has been as wonderful for the young kids who go there. And guys, take advantage of this young woman, because she and her staff, uh, they advocate for you guys everywhere you go. Mental health may be trending now, but you and your staff were talking about mental health three, four, three years ago when you started. You made it an issue. Uh, young, young people in Louisiana may be 50th in terms of economics, but you talked about education and economics and how they can stabilize themselves. And Renisha, the union your staff, the best thing that you guys do now is that we don't realize that many young people are raising themselves in the black community, only 30% of young children. So no one's talking about families. Family seems to be gone today. We talk, we talk about every alphabet but F for family. But what you do is, you make sure that no matter what that kid's family situation or community situation, that they're stabilized enough to deal with it, so that when they have an opportunity for family, it's back to the tradition of family. So God bless you. Thank you, guys. Y'all are the future. And I'll say this, if perfect people could have fixed it, it would have been fixed a long time ago. The world is waiting on y'all. Thank you.
Thank you to Councilmember Thomas and all of council members. We do have a, uh, special guest who want to make a presentation to, uh, Mr. Elijah. So, So Frat, Mr. Michael Johnson, come to the mic, uh, at the podium, and, uh, floor is yours.
Good morning, everyone. Uh, my name is Michael Johnson, and on behalf of So Frat, we would like to present Mr. Hogan with a $500 scholarship to jumpstart his college career. Uh, and I want to leave you with the fact of you control your journey and write your story, and don't let no one else write it for you.
While he's presenting, presenting that to, uh, to Elijah, I want to just congratulate and give a special acknowledgement, acknowledgement to Ms. Santos, who is a young mother, uh, who stayed on a journey and, uh, finished high school, and that's a big accomplishment. So, uh, congratulations to you, and I think you'll be an example for your children to look up to and say, no matter my circumstances, um, you know, I can achieve what I want to achieve. So congratulations to you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. All right. We're going to come down and take a, a quick group picture. Thank you.
Second. Second order of business, presentation, Kevin Doley, Director of Aviation, Lewis Armstrong New Orleans International Airport. Honoring Lewis Armstrong New Orleans International Airport as one of the top airports in North America, according to Amer- Airports Council International, which is a trade body for international airports. The New Orleans Airport was named one of the three top performing airports in the category of airports that handle 5 million to 15 million passengers annually. According to the surveys, which is, which was collected from 400 airports in 95 countries, the survey rated airports on wait time, services, cleanliness, and other factors.
Uh, Madam Clerk, thank you, of course. Uh, i- if you don't know, the last few years, uh, the ratings of our Armstrong International Airport, you haven't been paying attention to, I think, one of the best staffs and crews to run the airport in a long time. Uh, this is our opportunity to acknowledge you guys, Mr. Doleo. Uh, we'll get to this, all of the pleasantries from the council, but I'll turn it over to you. You may want to let, uh, our listening audience and wa- and watching, viewing audience know, how do we get to be so successful, and what are the things you guys are doing now that makes us number one, one of the top airports in the country, in the world, rather.
Okay, we'll do. Thank you. And, and, uh, what I'll do, I'll, I'll explain, uh, the awards, um, and, uh, and then get into some of the things we've been doing, uh, to be recognized at this level in the airports. We've come a long way, uh, from the previous facility and our previous operation. What the ACI ASQ, uh, program is, uh, ACI Airport Council International, uh, North America Chapter, uh, ACI is a worldwide, uh, airport trade organization, uh, NA, North America represents, uh, the Canadian and US, uh, components of the, of the worldwide entity. Uh, this award, though, is coming from the worldwide entity from, from ACI Worldwide. Uh, what the ASQ is, Airport Service Quality, uh, and what the, uh, process does is it dictates, uh, to airports that participate, uh, certain level of, of surveys by users of the facility while they're in the facility, uh, at certain times of day to ensure peak periods are caught, when, when things are active and busy and congested. Uh, it ensures that you're getting a good mix of domestic and international, uh, passengers, and the survey runs across a number of categories. It touches your entire operation. Uh, it's, uh, it's cleanliness of the facility, the ambiance in the facility, the check-in process, uh, arrival, uh, at the airport, parking, uh, the concessions experience, uh, the entirety of the operation, uh, is, is rated. Uh, and, um, and then at the end of the day, uh, you all are what your ratings are ranked, uh, amongst your peer airports. Uh, we're in the category of airports that has employments in the 5 to 15 million passenger range, uh, and for the past three years, running across all those categories. And it's not just us, it's not just airport staff and our efforts, uh, it's our stakeholders too. Uh, the airlines and the check-in process at ticket counters, uh, the TSA and movement through the checkpoint, uh, Sky Caps and, and their service to our customers' curbside. So it's the entirety of the operation and the entirety of our population, uh, that's rated. So for the past three years, uh, we've been ranked, uh, as, as best, uh, in our class in the 5 to 15 million, uh, passenger range. Uh, and we're typically in, you hit a certain threshold, uh, and it's typically two or three airports, uh, that are ranked the best, uh, per category. Uh, in our case this year was, uh, was three airports total. I think last, uh, in '22, it might have been two, uh, that, that hit the threshold and were ranked as best in North America in our category. So it's a, it's a very prestigious, uh, award and recognition from the industry. It's not one you can fudge. You can't take and, and dictate surveys to, uh, to lighter periods of time in your operation to catch, uh, the operation when you're at your best. Uh, they dictate times, they dictate certain numbers of, uh, of surveys and dictate how they need to be pushed out and to whom. Uh, so, so you're truly ranked on the overall operation and even at peak periods during the day. Uh, so we're very proud and very thankful to, uh, all of the stakeholders at the airport, because part of the reason, uh, and part of the effort in getting here, of course, was a new facility and the processes and procedures we stood up in maintaining the facility, uh, you know, all of our processes internally and how we deliver the services we do from, uh, ground transportation, uh, and services of that nature, but also our stakeholders. Uh, we invested a lot of time and energy, uh, into moving the culture forward at the airport and creating, uh, more of a culture of cooperation and good customer service amongst the entirety of our population. In fact, uh, to be badged at the airport, there's required training you go through that, you know, as dictates by the FAA, uh, and TSA, but we also dictate, uh, certain levels of training. Uh, one of them is customer service training, uh, before you can be badged to operate at the airport, uh, to start, uh, introduce, to introduce and begin building, uh, a certain frame of mind, uh, amongst, uh, amongst employees in the airport that work for the airlines, concessionaires, and, uh, and the whole ball of wax out there. So it's a lot of effort. It's definitely a huge team effort. Uh, it involves, uh, the entirety of the population, and we're just proud that, um, that we've been able to achieve this for the past three years.
You, you want to introduce your staff, uh, and who's the company?
To my left is, is Erin Burns, our Director of Communications and Intergovernmental Relations. Uh, next to me is Michelle Wocutt. Uh, Michelle is the Deputy Director for the Customer Service Activities at the airport, and Jamie McCluskey on the end is Deputy Director for Planning, Development, and Construction.
Councilmember King.
Congratulations on the achievements of the airport. Um, I've been a few times, uh, most recently, uh, I believe it was in March, and, uh, world-class airport, especially compared to, uh, it's good when you can have something, something to compare to.
Right.
Um, you can really say this is a first-class, world-class, uh, airport. So thank you for your leadership with that.
Okay, thank you.
Well, first of all, thank you, guys, uh, Kevin, for your leadership as well as your team. Uh, you can't do it without all of the employees that are connected there, and it means that everyone has bought into, uh, the program of customer service and how people travel. What people don't know is that, uh, travelers, if you travel a lot, folk also have airports that they try to avoid.
Yeah.
There are certain places they don't want to go, uh, either because of the physical structure, uh, because of the way they're treated. Uh, uh, but our airport now is a destination. There are a couple of things that I've noticed, as someone who's traveled, to have over about 600,000 people surveyed, right? I mean, 400, I think, uh, airports, 95 countries. That says a lot of the hundreds of millions of people who travel every year. Uh, there are a few things that are most notable. The cleanliness of the airport is unbelievable. From the restroom to the walkways to where they handle the, the baggage. There's very, very, very few, uh, places, and when you guys find out about it, you actually get right on it. The other thing is that it seems to me now, uh, Councilmember King, that every employee at the airport is an ambassador, uh, from New Orleans.
Yes.
Right? If, if you seem to be lost, you don't have to fumble around. Uh, employees there will come up to you and talk to you. Employees there will come up to you and talk to you. And then, Councilmember King, this is probably the number one thing for me. When you can go to an airport and TSA is nice? That's...
Yes.
And then the twins by Claire, right? No one, no one is better than the twins. And then, of course, the family you and I know, it's more than just a shoe shine stand.
Yes.
Papa Kendrick's there and truly ambassadors at the airport. And Papa Kendrick isn't with us anymore, but his sons who run that shoe shine stand are more than just people who have a business there. They're actually part of the airport.
Yep.
And before we do this, I would really like you to focus on that. Cleanliness speaks for itself going in and out the airport. In terms of that overall training and that customer service, how have you guys ramped that up? How have y'all done that?
We, we start with something that didn't happen before. You know, there's certain requirements when you're badged to operate at an airport that there's required viewing and required tests before you can receive a badge to function at an airport. But we've added to that process certain requirements of our own. So that started the old customer servicing. We started, we created a customer service video that spoke to our expectations in how to deliver good customer service to customers, behavior of employees as they operate at the airport. And it just ran through a gamut of things and expectations to kind of inject that way of thinking, that mode of operating right off the bat, even before you receive a badge to operate at the airport. And we reinforce it over time through actual interaction with, cooperation with, and partnership with our stakeholders. I'm a CEO that believes in spending time out in the operation. And I purposely move around the facility and make myself available and accessible to airline people, to Sky Caps, to baggage handlers, to interact with, bring ideas, bring issues, bring concerns, and to react to. So, and my staff, or our staff, functions in that manner as well. So it just runs through the organization. We've created sort of a family at the airport, and everyone's rolling in the same direction.
And Councilmember King, before we close this out, there's one thing that is absolutely wonderful, different from most airports in the world, but I think it also creates, has created kind of a dilemma, right? You can, you don't have to leave the airport to get our culture, our food, and when the jazz band is playing, a lot of people are missing their rides, right?
Absolutely, yes.
Folks will gather and stay there with highlighting the music and New Orleans culture. I don't know who started that or when that started, but you're creating a tourism destination, not just a travel destination. You guys have actually created a tourism destination because, you know, I was someone that keep going around for me because I was listening to the band the last time I was there. So thank you, guys, for that.
I want to also add, I appreciate the conscious effort to include local black-owned businesses. I know the Munch Factory is there, there's a Chase Family Restaurant there. So for me personally, when I arrive back to the airport and you go to these different places where the food is, ah, it's okay. And you come back and you see that Munch Factory sign, oh, it's just a different local. It's not like large brands like these national brands, and these are local New Orleans restaurants. And you're like, okay, I'm back home, you know? Like Councilman Thomas, you don't have to come to the city, any part of the city to get an authentic New Orleans meal, and that's much appreciated. That's the first thing I noticed when I come, when I arrived back home.
And that was a very important issue to us as we developed and stood up the concessions program and the new terminal, which ensured we created a sense of being in New Orleans in the airport. So you get your first real taste of the city before you ever leave the airport.
Councilman, first name Dee, last name Licious. The D-Licious, no doubt about it. Guys, we'll make this presentation, Councilmember, if you could join me up front.
Circus in New Orleans, celebrating the arrival of Universal Soul Circus in New Orleans East. The Universal Soul Circus is a single-ranked circus established in nineteen ninety-four by Cedric Walker, an African-American man who had a vision of creating a circus with a large percentage of people of color performing. He began searching for people from all over the world with incredible talents, and the rest is history.
Ringmaster Mr. Long is going to be representing Mr.
The morning.
Guys, if you have not been to Universal Soul Circus, it is absolutely unbelievable, right? What you guys have done for culture and entertainment and for the circus, I think, has revitalized it. It's nonstop entertainment. So before we get into what we're doing, thank you, guys, for bringing it back. And thank Mr. Walker for those conversations, because y'all had other venues.
Yes.
There were other places you could have gone. But after my conversations with him and businessman Mike Samuels, you guys decided to come back to our community, and we can't thank you enough for that. Y'all answered our prayers, especially. I think you guys have put a spirit at that location.
Yep.
Now that's going to live for a long time. But boss lady, let's start with you, and then we'll get to our great ringmates.
Okay, my name is Denise Howard, and I am the producer of the Universal Soul Circus, originating from Birmingham, Alabama originally, and now I reside in Atlanta. I've been with Universal for the last twenty years.
So tell us about the history of the circus, especially as it relates for our community, and why you guys not only formed this but have maintained it through some of the challenges to what it is today.
Well, the show started as a dream of Cedric Walker's. He had, was at the time, was involved in plays, theater. And he said that one night he was at the show and he noticed that he saw grandparents, parents, and children alike at this gospel play. And he said that he wanted to create something that was entertainment for African-American families. And through conversation, they threw out ideas about it being maybe a variety-type show. And then after a while, somebody said, well, if you're going to do all of that, why don't you just do a circus? And that's what he did.
Ringmaster Long, I have never seen anybody, right, that is just, doesn't stop at all.
Uh-huh.
I don't know. Councilman, one minute, he was in the middle of the rain, the next minute he was up top talking to kids and family, all at the same time, right?
Yes.
But the interaction is unbelievable. Talk about the energy, and I know my kids went nuts, I think I did too, right? But why is that important, especially for families and children?
Well, first of all, thanks for having us. Again, this means a lot, being born and raised right here in New Orleans, Louisiana, where I'm from. I feel that I was chosen to be ringmaster based off of the culture that I grew up with being from here. We are a very welcoming, inviting city, and so to have me lead this amazing show sprays that energy from top to bottom. As well as this being our thirty-year anniversary tour, we are celebrating thirty years, and we have named this tour our Family Reunion Tour. We take pride in, as Ms. Howard mentioned, addressing the entire family, from grandparents all the way down to the new generation. So the energy that I bring and the fun that I have is just what I get from the audience, and I'm able to give it right back to them, so I really enjoy it.
And Ms. Howard, the level of participation is unbelievable, right? You guys are not just performing.
Yeah.
Y'all find a way to make the audience, like I've never sang in front of a group, but I, he instructed me on, he said, just move your lips and make it sound like, seem like you know what you're doing, Al Green's song, "Let's Stay Together."
It'd be great, by the way. I want to put that on the record, you killed that Al Green.
I want to copy that, man. I had better, because, you know, you told me, hey, man, if this is public, you better do good. Why is it so important for you guys, with y'all's structure, to have the audience involved at every level, nonstop?
Well, you know, our audience feels that we are their show. You know, we are the Universal Soul Circus, and so we have a culture. And so our primary ticket holders, they come to our show with a sense of ownership of this belongs to them. And so us embracing that, we include them. We take pride in being the most interactive circus in the world. And so we don't only invite you to come and witness the show but be a part of it, as well as you understand now more than anyone.
And Ms. Howard, how long is the run for people that can still catch it, right?
This is our final weekend here in New Orleans, and we finish, we have one show tonight, one tomorrow, three Saturday and three Sunday, and then we travel on to the next city.
And I think you guys are going to Houston next, right?
Going to Houston next.
And just Councilmember King to pat ourselves on the back, we showed out.
Oh, yeah.
New Orleans and New Orleans East and entire community. Once people found out just how electric and how special it is, it's been packed, it's been unbelievable.
Yeah. I wish we had more time to stay here. And as you mentioned, to bring the energy that we provide to the New Orleans East specifically, it's a great vibe out there in that location.
Thank you.
So thanks for having us out there as well.
Thank you. Councilmember King?
Thank y'all for bringing that event to the city, not just the city but specifically the East. I understand how important it is, Councilman Thomas, to have this in the East. You could have chose any other venue throughout the city, but I think it says a lot about yourself and your brand and your company to choose the East. I've heard a lot of great things about it. I do plan on attending before Sunday, so I want to bring my family and have them enjoy the Universal Soul Circus. So I just want to thank you for all you've done, all you're doing, and congratulations on your thirtieth year.
Thirty years, yes.
That says a lot, so again, congratulations.
And Mr. Walker's not here, but we do have an official city proclamation for him and our ringmaster. You guys have been a blessing. It's been therapeutic, but it's also been one of the best things that's happened in our community in a long time. So thank y'all. Any closing thoughts from you, boss lady?
No, I just wanted to say that we truly enjoyed ourselves here in New Orleans. I went, I attended college here in New Orleans many years ago, so it's fun to be back, it's a fun city. Our talent and staff have had an amazing time since they've been here. And he can finally not have to hide his accent anymore. They all understand.
I love where I'm from. I also would love to thank, speaking of a blessing, Mary Cantrell came through last night and blessed us with her presence, and she had a ball, as well as being a participant in the show. So shout out to Mary Cantrell as well.
Well, all I can tell people, if you're dignitary and they know who you are, you can't hide. And Councilmember, it is unbelievable. I've enjoyed it before.
I'll be there.
And I'm looking to come back. Our crew, the neighbors' kids, and my, they want to come back, so I'm looking forward to closing out the weekend with y'all.
Great, love to have you.
We'll make the presentation, take these pictures now, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Universal Soul Circus.
One and only. When I say big time, you, I'm sorry, I had to.
When I say big time? I had to. When I say big time, you say.
Concerned agenda, communication from Erin Spears, Chief of Staff and Counsel, Council Utilities Regulatory Office. This may be received. Communication from Cameron Robinson, Acting Deputy Director of Finance and Administration. This may be received. Communication from William T. Samron, Chief of New Orleans EMS, City of New Orleans. This may be received and referred to the Quality of Life Committee. Communication from Rick C. Hathaway, Director of Department of Public Works, City of New Orleans. This may be received and referred to the Budget Committee. Communication from Rick C. Hathaway, Director of Department of Public Works, City of New Orleans. This may be received and referred to the Public Works Committee. Communication from Danielle Berger, Chief Administrator Officer, Orleans Public Defender's Office. This may be received. Communication from Brandy Delarge, MBA Budget Administrator, City of New Orleans Budget Office. This may be received. Communication from Dan Jettris, Infrastructure Project Administrator, Officer of Resilience and Sustainability, City of New Orleans. This may be received. Communication from Scott Speavy, Program Manager, Hammer and Gainer LLC. This may be received. Communication from Sophia Winston, Energy Policy Program Manager, Office of Resilience and Sustainability. This may be received and referred to the Quality of Life Committee. Communication from Micah Inka, Chief of Staff, Executive ADA, Orleans Parish District Attorney Office. This may be received. Communication from Amy B. Trupenga, Director of Personnel, City of New Orleans Department of Civil Service. This may be received. Communication from Deborah Ann Ryan, Executive Assistant and Project Coordinator to the Director of Finance, Department of Finance, City of New Orleans. This may be received. Communication from Dan Jettris, Infrastructure Project Administrator, Officer of Resilience and Sustainability, City of New Orleans. This may be received and referred to the Public Works Committee or Quality of Life Committee. Report of Anita Curran, Council Research Officer, New Orleans City Council, eighteen oh five to eighteen oh seven, Marini Street. 1805 to 1807 Marini Street, Application 2412792, Demo Council District D. This may be received. Report of Deputy Director of the New Orleans Historic District Landmarks Commission, Central Business District Historic Landmarks Commission, 1605 Alderman Street. This may be received. We have report of Executive Director of City Planning Commission. This may be received, suggesting hearing day 6, 2024. On this calendar number 34,0667 by Councilmember Green by request. This may be received and referred to the Budget Committee, Budget Committee Recommended Approval. On this calendar number 34,0670 by Councilmember King. Municipal address 3439 Brunson Street, zoning docket 1624. On this calendar number 34,0671 by Councilmember King. 3435 Brunson Street, zoning docket 1724. On this calendar number 34,0672 by Councilmember King. Municipal address 3429 Brunson Street, zoning docket 1824. On this calendar number 34,0673 by Councilmember King, zoning docket 2224. On this calendar 34,0676 by Councilmember Harris. Municipal address 7801 El Hall Boulevard, zoning docket 3024. On this calendar number 34,0678 by Councilmember Moreno, zoning docket 224. On this calendar number 34,0679 by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green and Thomas by request. This fiscal note was received. This matter has been referred to Budget, Budget Committee Recommended Approval. On this calendar number 34,0680 by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green and Thomas by request. Fiscal note was received. This matter has been referred to Budget, Budget Committee Recommended Approval. On this calendar number 34,0681 by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green and Thomas by request. Fiscal note was received. The matter was referred to Budget, Budget Committee Recommended Approval. On this calendar number 34,0682 by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green and Thomas by request. Fiscal note was received. The matter was referred to Budget, Budget Committee Recommended Approval. On this calendar number 34,0683 by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green and Thomas by request. Fiscal note was received. The matter was referred to Budget, Budget Committee Recommended Approval. On this calendar number 34,0684 by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green and Thomas by request. Fiscal note was received. The matter was referred to Budget, Budget Committee Recommended Approval. On this calendar number 34,0685 by Councilmember Moreno, Budget Committee Recommended Approval. On this calendar number 34,0688 by Councilmember Harris, zoning docket 2724. On this calendar number 34,0689 by Councilmember Harris. Municipal addresses 4521 through 4523 Magazine Street, zoning docket 2924. On this calendar number 34,0690 by Councilmember Harris. Municipal address 2429 Prozito Street, zoning docket number 3124. On this calendar number 34,0691 by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green and Thomas by request. Fiscal note was received. Budget Committee Recommended Approval. On this calendar number 34,0692 by Councilmember Jeruso, Moreno, Green and Thomas by request. Fiscal note was received. Budget Committee Recommended Approval. Motion line over, M24215 by Councilmember Thomas by request. This matter was referred to the Criminal Justice Committee, Quality of Life Committee Recommended Approval. Motion number 24238 by Councilmember Jeruso by request. Budget Committee Recommended Approval. Motion M24239 by Councilmember Green by request. Budget Committee Recommended Approval. Motion M24240 by Councilmember Thomas by request. Public Works Committee Recommended Approval. Motion M24241 by Councilmembers Harris, Green and Thomas by request. Quality of Life Recommended Approval. This is all matters on consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Burnside?
Michael Eric Burnside, 2215 Felicity. Uh, in regards to number 35, where we're re-appropriating unspent funds to cover expenses for 2023, it's really hard to keep track of what's being spent where when the, when the money comes in dribbles and drabs. It would be nice if at some point in the future, the city council in its role as a financial sponsor would consolidate all this knowledge in one place. Given that I have two minutes and I have seven things to discuss, it's 17 seconds each. On 33, we got a reception facility on Magazine Street, conditional use. It would be really nice if it had an affordable housing component. Uh, number 32, I'd like to say thank you to the city council for their multifamily affordable act. Uh, number 27, I would like to point out that the money spent results in 12,000 reserve police officer hours being added if you give them a hundred dollars each. And it might be nice to know what they're being used for. And number 24, uh, barriers to early childhood education does not exist. It's a million dollar business. You're spending $20,000 per child. A small business has 50 children. 50 times 20,000 is a million. With a million bucks annual income, you can hire really good lawyers. In regards to number 19, uh, and 20 and 21, the conditional uses that are being approved are making roughshod over the GPD zoning. The land in question was supposed to be preserved, was supposed to be able to be developed. But at the same time, the development was supposed to help preserve the natural features. There are no natural features. The entire thing is just a leveled sandlot. In regards to number one, uh, the utility pole situation at Magnolia and Felicity. I was walking down the street in Jefferson Parish and noticed something interesting. Apparently, one of the problems is at Felicity and Magnolia, the electric line that comes underground to power some traffic lights. And apparently, we can't get.
That's your time, Mr. Burnside. Thank you. Uh, Anita, you can read any, uh, germane items or germane comments, I mean.
Yeah, so there's a number of comments on the agenda with, uh, reference to Palestine and a support for ceasefire resolution. So per council rules, I'm just going to read portions of the comments that are germane. Uh, the rest, the entirety of the comments will be included in the record. First comment is for, uh, consent agenda item one. Steven Manold says, I request that the city look into diversifying the energy monopoly that Entergy has imposed and investigate substantial rate hikes during summer months. Consent number three, Daniel Hesse older says, as a former paramedic, I can speak to the importance of training for EMS personnel. They are the front lines of defense for medical and traumatic injuries and true heroes. Consent 12, Melissa Fleming comments, the folks getting hired onto NOPD should know that they can be deployed to defend large money interests from the danger of peaceful college students calling for accountability and divestment. This is consent 24. We have Samantha Hines, few comments. Apologies. Uh, my name is Samantha Hines, and I've been a New Orleans educator for over 10 years. In that time, I've seen the desperate need for not only, uh, for early childhood programs, but the need for up to date facilities with enough space as well. I have worked tirelessly over the last 10 years to ensure that my students feel safe and comfortable while they learn about the world around them. Early childhood centers are our children's first step into the educational world. We have, uh, Stephanie Green commenting on consent 29. I'm submitting a comment in favor of consent agenda 29, also known as calendar 34683. I wholeheartedly support the funding of career and training service for any Orleans Parish residents that wish to access those services. I'm currently employed, but throughout my high school and college education, I was able to access many services at my schools that advised me and my peers in applying for jobs, considering what careers we wanted to pursue, how to build up and present our skills and knowledge and much more. The future of our parish lies in how we support the future of its people. Uh, Yvette Vivin Sanchez comments on consent 30. The city should be creating and funding even more programs to ensure employment for all New Orleanians. Angela Davis, uh, commenting on consent 37. Angela says, I support this initiative solidifying the city of New Orleans's commitment to providing services to the formerly incarcerated. Reentry is a great challenge for our formerly incarcerated community members. No one knows this more than our returning citizens coming back from the deadly Angola prison. That's it for our consent agenda comments.
Thank you, Anita. We have a couple more, uh, comments that came in. Emily Posner, come on up, followed by Grace Tettinger, and then looks like Sasha Bailey. Are you on consent, Emily, or is it regular agenda item?
Consent.
Okay.
I was going to comment on consent item 12, which concerns police staffing and a new report. I'm specifically concerned about the increasing of staffing and hiring of the New Orleans Police Department, in particular because of their new relationship with the Louisiana State Police and the way the Louisiana State Police have been used to intimidate students and protesters who are peacefully protesting around Palestine here in New Orleans. This is funding that could be going towards our community, but is being used to attack protesters and the unhoused. And in addition, I would like to raise, um, some particular concerns around this relationship with the New Orleans Police and the Louisiana State Police. As many of y'all may have read, there was an article that came out in the New Orleans Times-Picayune, excuse me, NOLA.com, it's not the Times-Pic anymore, um, that talked about this new relationship of Team, uh, Team NOLA that of the Louisiana State Police and how they're specifically using protect pretextual reasons to pull over New Orleanians. Um, one of the main reason, one of the main ways that they're pulling over our community is through tinted windows. Um, excessive tint, which is a ticket. It's just a ticket. But they're using this pretextual ability to then get into people's cars and arrest folks. Um, and I find this to be extremely problematic. Um, I've been a criminal defense attorney for over 10 years here in the city. Um, and I believe that anytime a offense is just a ticketed offense, you should just give that person a ticket and move on with their way. But using that ticket as a means to then get into someone's car and circumvent the constitution is an extreme problem. Um, and this is specifically what the state police have said that they're going to do and that they're continuing, continue to go and do. Um, and so I have major concerns around this relationship. Um, and I hope that as we continue to move forward, that we will address this relationship and specifically address this relationship as its means to criminalize protesters and people who are exercising their First Amendment right. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Grace Tettinger, also on item 12.
Good morning. My name is Grace Treffinger, born and raised in New Orleans. I'm here today to comment on item number 12. Uh, just want to echo my, um, what Emily just said around the concern around increased staffing and hiring of New Orleans Police Department, especially as they work with the Louisiana State Police to intimidate students and protesters peacefully protesting and brutalizing local New Orleanians. We know that student movements, especially ones like this massive that we've been seeing in support of Palestine and in support of human rights are historically on the right side of history. And I believe it is the responsibility of our city council to stand on the right side of history in this moment and, um, and to support, number one, a ceasefire resolution and add it to the next city council agenda.
Stay germane to the police staffing, please.
This is all connected, I believe, but I'll, I'll, I'll keep it short and just say, um, I believe that this is, the city council is, um, making a large mistake here by increasing the staffing and hiring of NOPD as it connects to, um, peaceful right to protest that every one of us has in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Sasha Bailey, followed by Felix Allen.
It's bolag, but that's close. No, you're fine. My handwriting is terrible. Uh, so I'm concerned about money going to the DA's office when they're placing trumped up charges on peaceful protesters at these Tulane Palestine protests. And yet they don't take any action on individuals who try to ram their cars into protesters or make fake 911 calls against protesters at the encampment. You know, I was out there at 3:30 in the morning as a legal observer. I saw what happened. The use of force was excessive. So germane also to 12, which the last folks were talking about. I think it's outrageous to be giving more money to the police when they're cooperating with the, uh, state police in these, uh, kind of excessive police actions. And what we really need to do is put a ceasefire resolution on the agenda. 161 cities have signed a ceasefire resolution.
Stay germane to item 12.
I think this is germane to that. This is related to the actions of the DA and the police. And I really think that it's embarrassing that New Orleans hasn't put this on the agenda. And we should, it should be on the next council agenda meeting. I would really be pleased. I think a lot of other people would be, at least let's talk about it.
Thank you. Felix Allen? And Mr. Allen, you're also on item 12.
I'm on item 12 indeed. Um, I'm Felix from District C. I just also have a couple of concerns about the staffing and hiring, uh, at the NOPD. Um, I read in the, um, 2023 annual IPM report. Um, it said on page 38 that 90% of all people subjected to force by the NOPD were black folks. Uh, this disparity is obviously extremely concerning. Um, in a city with a 58% of black population, and I think it's regardless, uh, um, it's racist regardless of how the consent decree monitors try to spin it. I'm also obviously concerned about the NOPD's recent collaboration with the, uh, Louisiana State Police. I think that's a trend. Uh, in particular, uh, their action of attacking students who were protesting genocide at Tulane. Uh, these students were just doing the right thing and they demonstrated leadership. Uh, so instead of pressing these bogus charges on them, we should condemn the Tulane and Loyal administrations uh, for sending the LSP on their own students. And while we're at it, I think we should really give these students some of those like big keys to the city if they still make those, uh, because they did demonstrate real leadership. Uh, but we should follow these students' lead and add a ceasefire resolution to the agenda. Uh, last time I was here, I misspoken. I said such a resolution would be controversial. I just want to clarify, uh,
Stay germane to the topic.
161 cities have now signed ceasefire resolutions, so this is actually extremely uncontroversial. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. All right. Those are all the comments on consent. I'll make a motion to adopt.
I have number 37.
Councilmember Morell, second. All in favor? Thomas Moreno, Morell, can you vote? Thank you. All right, five yeas, no nays. The consent agenda is adopted.
Councilmembers, we need to suspend the rules to receive some communications to add to the consent agenda.
Hang on, Adam's coming to check with you.
To the regular agenda.
There we go. I was like, we just passed consent, so that doesn't make sense.
So, yes, I'll suspend the rules to add, uh, to the regular agenda.
When the machine comes up. I'll move. Second by Councilmember Harris. Five yeas, no nays.
And we need to further suspend the rules to add them to the agenda.
I've moved. Second by Councilmember Morell. Six yeas, no nays.
Regular agenda. Communication from Amy B. Trupanga, Director of Personnel, City of New Orleans Department of Civil Service, submitting for council approval amendments to the Classified Play Plan, City Council, in accordance with Article 10, Section 10 of the Constitution of Louisiana as adopted by Civil Service Commission at its meeting of May 30, 2024. This may be received and referred to the Budget Committee. Communication from Amy B. Trupanga, Director of Personnel, City of New Orleans Department of Civil Service, submitting for council approval amendments to the Classified Play Plan, Office of Inspector General, in accordance with Article 10, Section 10 of the Constitution of Louisiana as adopted by Civil Service Commission at its meeting at its meeting of May 30, 2024 as outlined below. This may be received and referred to the Budget Committee. Communication from Amy B. Trupanga, Director of Personnel, City of New Orleans Director of Civil Service, submitting for council approval amendments to the Classified Play Plan, Sujan Water Board, in accordance with Article 10, Section 10 of the Constitution of Louisiana as adopted by Civil Service Commission at its meeting of May 30, 2024 as outlined below. This may be received and referred to the Budget Committee. Communication from Amy B. Trupanga, Director of Personnel, City of New Orleans Department of Civil Service, submitting a council approval amendments to the Classified Play Plan, New Orleans Public Library, in accordance with Article 10, Section 10 of the Constitution of Louisiana as adopted by Civil Service Commission at its meeting of May 30 as outlined below. This may be received and referred to Budget. Communication from Amy B. Trupanga, Director of Personnel, City of New Orleans Department of Civil Service, submitting for council approval amendments to the Classified Pay Plan, Sujan Water Board, in accordance with Article 10, Section 10 of the Constitution of Louisiana as adopted by the Civil Service Commission at its meeting of May 30, 2024, as outlined below. This may be received and referred to the Budget Committee. Can we get a vote to?
We're gonna just take a vote to add these to the agenda in Globo.
All right, I'll make a motion to add in Globo. Second by Councilmember Morel. One more. Five yes, no, nays.
Okay. Regular agenda. Regular agenda, we have demolition request of Debbie Champagne. This matter, 1805 through 1807 Marion Street, 2412792, demo, Council District D. This matter has been deferred to 620. HDLC of James Kent Tradeaway Jr., 1605 Audubon Street. This matter has been deferred to 620. Legislative group, and we have a HDLC appeal of Richard Cortez, Joan Walker LLP, requesting to appeal the Historic District Landmarks Commission of Denial of the renovation of a landmark's two-story, single-family residential building, including the infill of a rear porch for property located at 1519 Robert C. Blake Senior Drive. We have a motion, 24250, by Councilmember Harris, approving the applicant's request for the property located at 1519 Robert C. Blake Senior Drive. And the decision of the commission is overruled, subject to the following condition. The infill of the rear gallery and resulting stair enclosure must be constructed in a way that preserves the visual perception of the building's history, massing in type to the extent possible, including through the design and materials as determined in the coordination with HDLC staffing.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Brian.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a presentation for a significantly rated designated landmark located in the Central City National Register Historic District. The property owner would like to enclose a rear gallery to construct an interior stair for circulation from the first floor to the second floor. Section 9 of the guidelines state that these elements, including side halls, were meant to be open exterior spaces. Property owners often desire to enclose these spaces, particularly those that access service wings, to prevent the need to go outside when traveling between rooms. These transitional spaces are an essential element of a building's type. Excuse me. As a result, enclosing these spaces, particularly where visible from the street, is a radical alteration to a building and its visual perception from the public right-of-way. The HDLC does not permit enclosing of any porch, gallery, or balcony that is visible from the public right-of-way. The ARC, at two meetings, voted to recommend denial of the application because it does not meet the HDLC guidelines. The ARC reviewed the floor plans of the building and made several recommendations on locations where the stair could easily be located at the interior of the building, as advised by the guidelines, with minimal impact on the use of the more than adequate space available. This would maintain the exterior of the historic landmark building intact. While the open space at the rear of this building is minimally visible from the surrounding public right-of-way, it is under the full HDLC jurisdiction based on its landmark designation. Staff agrees with the ARC recommendation that the proposed enclosure is not appropriate and that the applicant should continue to explore an alternative strategy to locate the desired stair within the existing building envelope. However, staff does note that after several meetings with the applicant between the ARC meetings, that the most recent proposal of the shuttered enclosure is the most successful. Based on the guidelines and ARC recommendation, staff recommends denial of the appeal, however, we do have alternatives that are available.
Great, thank you, Brian. I appreciate that, I appreciate you working with the property owner. And with that, I'm gonna go ahead and move.
We need a quorum, Councilman.
Uh, we need a quorum.
I lied, we have one.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Just need the machine to come up. It's not up to mine. Well, I will move. Morel, seconds, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
At the top of page 26, legislative group in Zoning Dock at 3224 by Coonan in Vienna, Louisiana LLC, requesting a conditional use to permit a motor vehicle service and repair facility minor in an MU1 medium-intensity mixed-use district in an HUC Historic Urban Corridor Use Restriction Overlay District on Square 603, Lots X, Y, and Z, in the 1st Municipal District bounded by Tulane Avenue, South Broad Street, Budaine Street, and South White Street. Municipal address 2701 through 2717 Tulane Avenue. The recommendation of city planning being for denial. We have motion, M24245, by Councilmember Harris. Motion overruling and approving the applicant's request for zoning dock at 3224 with the following provisos, the sale of new or used tires is prohibited.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, CPC?
Good morning, council members. This is a proposal to redevelop a wedge-shaped parcel at the intersection of Tulane and Broad, across the street from the Orleans Parish Communal District Court, with a drive-through, all-change facility. The site is currently developed with an existing structure, which was previously used as a retail goods establishment, which is planned for demolition. The request to permit a minor motor vehicle service and repair facility is permitted in the base zoning district MU1. However, it requires conditional use approval in the HUC Historic Urban Corridor Use Restriction Overlay District. The Planning Commission found that the location of the site at a busy intersection, the configuration of parking, insufficient queuing lines, would likely impede vehicle traffic on the surrounding streets and make the site inadequate for the proposed use. The commission also found the proposal was not compatible with the zoning regulations and the master plan future land use designation that have been crafted to enhance walkability and provide a better quality urban environment for that area. And is incongruous with the city's revitalization efforts of Broad Street and Tulane Avenues. Therefore, the request was recommended for denial by CPC, but no one in the public spoke in opposition.
Thank you, CPC. Although CPC denied this conditional use, my office was in contact with both the representative of the property owner as well as the surrounding business owners, all of whom are amenable to the institution of provisos that would allow the property to exist without negatively impacting the surrounding area. I will note that this place cannot sell new or used tires as per the provisos. We did not receive any letters of opposition to this conditional use, so I will move to overrule CPC. Second by Council President Moreno. Six yes, thank you.
Thank you, I put it in the card, but thank you.
Oh.
I put it in late, but thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
This is gonna be a really beautiful project and really revitalize this corner. And I really appreciate your office working with us.
I appreciate you, thank you.
At the top of page 27, legislative group in Zoning Dock at 3624, 12 House Company LLC, requesting a conditional use to permit a bed and breakfast principal in an HMC2 Historic Marionie-Tremee Bywater Commercial District in the Bed and Breakfast Interim Zoning District on Square 183, Lot I, in the 3rd Municipal District bounded by Poland Avenue, Dolphine Street, Laseb Street, and Royal Street. Municipal address 710, Poland Avenue. The recommendation of city planning being for approval, subject to three provisos. Motion, M24255, by Councilmember King, approving the applicant's request for zoning dock at 3624, subject to the three provisos as stated in the City Planning Commission report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First we have... All right. Mr. Beverly Andrews? Beverly Andrews?
Hi, I'm Beverly Andrews, other than Laseb Street, just a block away from 710 Poland. The operators initially presented the project as a family-run B&amp;B. They purposely deceived the city, the Bywater Neighborhood Association, the Neighbors First for Bywater Association, and the adjacent neighbors at the MPP. Over the last several months, they have held events blasting DJ music and disturbing the neighbors up to three blocks away. They have hired the former Director of Safety and Permit, hoping that this well-connected consultant can sway the council. Please do not reward this deplacious behavior. Please vote no on this item and support the numerous residents whose quality of life may be ruined by the neighborhood disrespecting operators. Would the councilman members want music blasted into their neighborhoods all hours of the night?
Thank you, Ms. Andrews.
Thank you.
You're very welcome, and I apologize, I jumped the gun a bit. We do have a report from City Planning Commission, I apologize.
Yes, the applicant is requesting a conditional use for principal bed and breakfast in an existing single-family structure. The applicant has stated that only three of the five bedrooms will be utilized for the bed and breakfast guest and the other two bedrooms will be used by the property owner, which meets the standards of the CZO. No additional construction work is proposed. The item was heard at the April 23 CPC hearing. There was no openness back then to the request and the commission unanimously recommended this request for approval.
Okay, all right, thank you. So we'll proceed with the comments. We have this Desiree Biomonte?
Hello, my name is Desiree Biomonte and I own a business two doors down from the property. I'm voicing my objection to this matter. It is evident to everyone adjacent that there is no respect for the neighborhood since two very large, loud, and obnoxious events without a single permit was held over the May 4th, May 5th weekend. It's the audacity, presumptuousness, and the thumbing of the nose that this will fly through and everything will be fine. That's where the problem lies. The first thing the owners told us at an impromptu meeting at the site was with this issue, that we can do anything we want with this permit, except stripping and gambling. How do you think that made us feel? It's important to note, we're not attacking the 12th House Company personally. They're very nice people. But I am in full opposition to this permit and our quality to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Biomonte. All right. I'm gonna call your name, let me know you want to speak or just be in support or opposition. Jaclyn Ryan? Jaclyn Ryan here?
Hi, I'm Jaclyn Ryan. I just wanted to offer my support of the project for many reasons, but largely because they've been very involved with the community. Rakela is an active participant in the parent-teacher organization at our public school, Homer Plessy, and in personal conversations with them, they have told me that they are working with the neighborhood and interested in resolving this and making it a thing that everyone would enjoy. And I am just here sort of to tell you personally and my relationship with them that I believe that that's true.
Thank you. Just to be consistent, I ask everyone to state their name, address, and if you are a paid actor or not. So we have Ms. Ryan, 1810 Fern Street. All right, last name is Shio Kori? Shio, is that correct? K-A-O-R-I? Show? Okay, in support? Ron Lasell? You want to speak or?
Ron Lasell, Zach Smith Consulting. Thank you, council members, for hearing this today. There's been a lot of misperceptions and a lot of things that have been written. And I would like to say that the owners aren't here. They live at this property with their three kids. Their three kids under 16 years old. They have been accused of a lot of things online, of having parties and rages and all of these things. And just please remember, there are three kids that live at this property. And we had a meeting with our neighbors and will continue to work with the neighbors, where we had an excellent meeting with the neighborhood. So as we continue to work through this process, we ask, support your motion for approval and we will continue to work with the neighbors.
Thank you. Cyrus Gilord? Garord? I'm doing my best.
That's from Morgan City, that'll get you every time. Cyrus Jawa, hey, everyone. I'm one of the owners of the property. We've lived there. We bought, purchased the property about a year ago.
Can you bring a mic to your mouth?
Can you hear me? Sorry about that. We've been at the property for a year. We are trying, we lived there with our three kids. My spouse is a well-known artist in the city. And we bought the property really for the purpose of the bed breakfast and also to have a space for us to be able to do art. So we have an art studio downstairs. Our intentions stay the same. We have communicated, all of our direct neighbors, people that live right next door to us, are in full support of this. There was an event that was allowed on the 5th. It was for my nephew, it was a party and it was loud. It's our house and we didn't know. And soon after is when things went awry and then there was online posting and different things. We held a meeting with all of our neighbors, hoping to squash any issues and explain what our purpose was. We don't, any event, any party or anything we had, we made sure that, no matter what it was, stopped before quiet hours of the city. So even in their complaints, they're like, I heard loud music at 8 o'clock. Even though it ended at 8 o'clock, we were upset that we heard loud music. But we didn't know that. The head of the BNA has our phone number, all of our neighbors have our phone numbers. Our door's wide open. We actually leave it open for people to come in and see the space, since it's a lot of people that are interested in the space, considering what it used to look like. Bobwire fences knocked down, used cars, trash, junk. You know, we bought the property for a sizable amount of money, knowing that we can make something nice out of it, and we have. We're lifelong, I've lived here my whole life. My kids go to the schools here, Homer Plessy, New Harmony. I'm open to do anything with my community and that's what our meeting was about previously. I will say, the opposition, that only opposition in that meeting from the BNA was one sole person who claimed to be an architect.
Thank you, that's your time.
Thank you.
All right, no problem. Another comment call from Ms. Di Rossia? I'm sorry, 710 Poland Avenue owner slash occupant applicant? Rachella?
Rakela.
Renela?
Hello, council members, my name is Rakela Di Rosaria. I am one of the owners and occupants of 710 Poland. I won't waste your time echoing what my husband has already said about what our intentions are. But I can assure the council, as well as our concerned neighbors that are here today, that we will continue to work with them diligently to resolve any issues that they may have, whether it's our noise, parking, or whether or not they feel like there was some sort of a bait and switch that has happened between what our original intentions are and what our intentions are moving forward. Our intentions, I will state one more time, are a principal bed and breakfast. We do live there with our three children and three very ugly dogs. And we will be welcoming guests into our home as a bed and breakfast, not as an event space. We do not intend to hold events, though it would be nice if we did some weddings or as we did with the Plessy fundraiser. We do choose to engage the community and I hope to find different ways to do that moving forward.
Thank you. Daniel Bullard?
That was double talk, by the way.
Sorry, buddy.
Don't want to have any bits, but it would be nice to do weddings, I just want to point that out.
Mr. Bullard, the floor is yours.
Good morning, honorable members of the New Orleans City Council. My name is Daniel Bronte Bullard. I live at 6221 North Johnson Street, New Orleans. As an educator in New Orleans East, I'm here today to ask you to support the application for a principal bed and breakfast at 710 Poland Avenue. One of the core values that makes this city special is its entrepreneurial spirit of innovation in the face of hardship. This is a place that has and continues to reinvent itself each time a new challenge arises. We also value welcoming others, neighbors and strangers alike, into our lives with open arms. Land Yap is not just a word here. It's a living and vibrant philosophy that governs how we treat each other in this community. Rakela and Cyrus represents these ideals in abundance. They took a blighted property across the street from one of the largest and most embarrassing examples of urban decay in our city and turned it into a beautiful and inviting space. They did so using their own life savings, ingenuity, and natural talent. They're not out-of-town investors or corporate landlords, but local artists and creators with a vision- but local artists and creators with a vision for improving a neighborhood that they love deeply. The space they created has become an inclusive, safe haven for those who might not otherwise have access to a pool space in a city that is becoming increasingly inaccessible to its own residents. As committed community members, their children attend local public schools, and they actively engage with community groups. They build respectful relationships with their neighbors and address all grievances, including those made by entities with conflicting business interests and deeply held biases against them. As entrepreneurs, they have revitalized a property left to rot and did so taking no government money. We should be celebrating this kind of effort in this city, not stifling it. Today, I'm asking you, as someone who loves the city, potholes and all, to the deepest part of my soul, and as someone who has chosen to serve the future of New Orleans through the field of education, to choose supporting other locals who are also trying to build up the potential of this community instead of taking from it. I yield my time.
Thank you. Andrew Barkley? Andrew Barkley? Last call for Andrew Barkley in support? Nikki Brown?
Hello. Hello, my name is Nikki Brown. Councilmembers, I am here expressing my enthusiastic support for the establishment.
Brown, address please, I'm sorry.
Sorry, 630 Poland Avenue. I am here expressing my enthusiastic support for the establishment of 710 Poland Avenue, owned by Rakela and Cyrus, for their application as a principal bed and breakfast. As a resident, direct neighbor, I live at 630 Poland Avenue. Our homes are two doors down from one another. A queer woman of color, someone who has grown up in New Orleans and has lived here for the last 31 years, I believe this venture exemplifies the kind of business that contributes positively to our neighborhood and the city as a whole. Rakela and Cyrus are not only dedicated entrepreneurs, but also active members of our community. They have consistently demonstrated their commitment to community engagement and have already made significant contributions to the well-being of our neighborhood. Their presence in our community adds value and diversity, enriching the fabric of our area. In hearing the plans of 710 Poland from Rakela and Cyrus, I know this space will foster a safe community space for queer people and people of color, children alike. Moreover, the vision of 710 Poland Avenue represents the type of establishment we want to see flourish in our neighborhood. I am excited to see this business thrive and contribute to the vibrance of our area. Personally, I am very excited to have a pool on my block because the community Nord Pool has been closed since COVID. I firmly believe that 710 Poland Avenue will be a benefit to our neighborhood, offering not only accommodations to locals and to tourists, but also fostering a sense of community and belonging. It will attract visitors who will patronize local businesses, thereby stimulating economic growth. Additionally, the presence of a well-run establishment can enhance the appeal of our neighborhood, making it more attractive to residents and visitors alike. Rakela and Cyrus are exemplary members of our community, and their business will undoubtedly enhance the vitality and charm of our neighborhood. Thank you for considering my input on this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Natalie Rupp? Again, address please, and if you are paid to be here.
Hey there, my name is Natalie Rupp. I live in 924 Congress Street.
Continue, Ms.
So I am here to speak on behalf of the Trans Income Project.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Could we refrain from that respectfully? Yes, yes, come on. Look, we can, we.
You're okay.
Continue, Ms. Rupp.
You're okay.
All right.
Continue, Mr.
I am the executive director of the Trans Income Project, as well as an advisor for Louisiana Trans Advocates, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the trans community and why this pool and community center is so important. As we saw perhaps just now, it is very hard right now to be a trans person here in the South, and particularly here in Louisiana, and even here in New Orleans. That being said, what we do not have right now are explicit spaces for trans people and queer people to be able to have their, you know, be out in a bathing suit perhaps in public, or even being out like this in public without being critiqued and policed. It is essential that we have places like this so that people like me can have a place to be safe and at home. This location is not just a bed and breakfast. It'll be a safe haven for the trans community that I represent, both here in New Orleans and statewide, as well as will be a great place for trans and queer people to show up as tourists, which is a valuable place to have, particularly right now, while there is an unprecedented onslaught on the rights of trans people and even in a cultural insensitivity towards what we are facing. Right now, this is a central location to have, and what we really need is for places like this to exist. I yield my time and thank you for your support for this property.
Thank you. Could we refrain from those outbursts? That's not really necessary. Thank you. Zachary Moore?
I'm Zachary Moore. I'm here to speak in behalf of 710 Poland Avenue, the Bed and Breakfast. I've known Rakela for a long time. She's always been a very family, community-oriented individual, giving back every way she can. I know that the, this business itself is going to offer a safe haven for a lot of the community that's necessary, and then doesn't really exist in the Bywater especially. This is such a boon to the Bywater. It's going to bring positive business. It's going to allow for more culture to be flourishing throughout the, throughout the city, and more tourism to come that direction as well, which is always needed. So, yeah, I don't see why we wouldn't support this.
And your address, Mr. Moore?
My address, 4229 North Derby Street.
Thank you. Thank you, just want to keep it consistent. Next, Simon. Wusha Beck? Is that correct? Simon, info only? All right. Hai Gan? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Hi there. My name's Simone. I'm commenting on the conversion or the permitting of 710 Poland to a B and B. My address is 1855 Rosier Street. Regarding the conditional use to permit a bed and breakfast at 710 Poland Ave., I'm just here to say that it's important to consider the voices of the community. Sorry. Similarly, in Palestine, displacement and violence against civilians.
Come on, Mr., look, look, this is not germane to that. We're talking about the permitting in 710. I respect, I respect and understand your Palestine concerns, but respectfully, this is not the item for that. This, it just isn't. It just isn't.
Palestine is a local issue, and it's affecting lots of community members. Land displacement and permitting is really central to both of these issues.
Is Hai Gan here? You have the floor, thank you. This is not the issue for that. No, 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 he's not going to finish it.
Let me just, let me just get to the point, sorry.
No, listen, we're not going to allow this at this meeting every time.
I just want y'all to put a ceasefire.
This is not the item to discuss that. Just ask that you show the, show the council respect. There we go.
All right, next speaker, your comments are not germane. Next speaker, Mr. King.
Just don't touch me, I'm bothering my husband. JP, hold on. Fucking Tom, all you motherfuckers, don't touch me, dude.
All right, no, 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 no.
All right.
We're gonna, we're gonna continue, we're gonna continue, Mr. Hai? All right, Mr. Hai Gan?
Sir, we'll get to that. All right. We'll go to the next.
You have the floor, sir.
We have the floor.
Hi, city councilmembers, my name is Hai Zhang. I live at 835 Taft Place. Thank you for your time today. I just wanted to speak in support of 710 Poland getting their permitting as a bed and breakfast. I am a community member, and I am just going to echo everything that has been said today. This is a warm, safe, secure community space, not just for queer people, but for all people of the local art community.
One second, one second, one second. I want to make sure you have the floor. Can we close that door, please? Can we have the door closed so we can continue?
Yes, I just wanted to give my support for 710 Poland. This is a safe community space for our local art community, which adds so much vibrancy to the city without asking for very much. We finally have a space in which people are safe and secure to exist as themselves, as we've seen exemplified here. This is the exact reason why we need the space, and I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Monique Arrington? Thank you, Ms. Arrington. Reggie, that's all it says. Okay, Reggie, Reggie Ford. Mr. Ford, name it and address, please, thank you.
All right, Reggie Ford, 3907 St. Claude. And also lived at 713 Lesseps.
Make sure that door closed, so everyone gets the same amount of respect and time. All right, you can go ahead, thank you.
How y'all doing? All right. I just wanted to say, I wasn't here for this, but I'm in full support of 710 Poland. I live, like, on the other side of the block since, like, 1988, and I'm glad they're revitalizing the property. It's been abandoned for so many years. I just want to thank them for bringing that back into use. So I'm in full support of this. Thank you, guys.
All right, so, so listen, I, I've heard a lot of support there. There is my position. There is also some support. We're going to tentatively approve this. It has to go to the ordinance phase. The owners, the representation, have committed, has committed to work with the neighborhood as a whole to make sure this is a win-win for everyone. Nothing is, it's etched in stone yet, so we will continue to monitor this and revisit this down the road. Thank you. So at this, at this time, I'm sorry, I make a motion to adopt it. Second by Councilmember Harris. Six yeas, no nays. The motion's adopted. Thank you.
At the top of page 28, Legislative Grouping, Preserving Residential Character, Intrum Zoning District Appeal, IZD Number 423 of Joseph Babington, Requesting to appeal the Preserving Residential Character, Intrum Zoning District to permit one commercial short-term rental in a HUMU historic urban mixed-use district on Lot 2, Square 24, in the 4 Municipal District, bounded by 3rd Street, Russo Street, 4th Street, and Chapatula Street. For property located at 424 3rd Street, the City Planning Commission recommended approval. We have motion M24251 by Councilmember Harris, denying the applicant's appeal request for property located at 424 3rd Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Jeruso has, has a good point, and I'm going to allow him to speak first and ask you CPC some questions about your approval of this application.
Yeah, I guess I want to start with, my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that the report of short-term rentals and commercial zones is incomplete. Is that right?
Sorry, with the?
I understand. I'll get a little bit closer, too. My understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that city planning has an RFP to study commercial short-term rentals.
Correct.
And that is incomplete.
It is incomplete.
Given the fact that the legislative body has issued an IZD through November, and that study is incomplete, isn't it more philosophically aligned to deny the application as opposed to grant it? You guys are the city planners, so I'm asking the question.
I think that, you know, we're looking at it on a case-by-case basis. In this particular case, the context of it was that there aren't a lot of residential dwellings near it. It's mostly industrial and vacant land. So in this case, we thought it was approvable.
But I guess that's, that's what's concerning to me. And, and look, I realize that's what you're trying to do in this instance, and I'm, I want to be clear, my frustration is not expressed at the people sitting at this table, but repeatedly, particularly the district council members have asked that we approach something holistically, comprehensively, and with a plan. And I, I have trouble articulating what our land use plan is. I, I feel like it's subject to whims and to different things. And when, just candidly, when city planning says, I want it on a case-by-case basis, I get case-by-case basis. When I get, hey, this is something we think is citywide, like early childhood, without talking to anybody, that's what we get. And so I, I am, this is, this is now the second time for me in a month, and there was another issue pending with OCIAI, that's number three. We got to get this fixed collaboratively. And what I just want to make sure is that if city planning, who is supposed to be at the beachhead of making land use policy, is aligned with the legislative branch, which has spoken very clearly about these matters, and, and number one, there's an IZD in place, and number two, we, we say we can't set policy right now because we're waiting on the report to come back. So I'm flustered because there seems to be, and this is true in the quiet zone as well, I'm going to jump ahead for a moment, that A, we're not doing things comprehensively, and B, we're not communicating with people about what those things are. And I just want it solved. And I, and again, this is not directed at the two of you. I'm just saying this more generally, that we, the councilmembers, get eaten up at neighborhood meetings and places that we go because things are decided on an ad hoc basis. That is the honest truth. And we need to make sure, A, community is more engaged, and B, there's more communication. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jeruso. You really encapsulated my, my comments as well. There is an IZD in place currently. And that IZD, in my mind, prohibits the application for a commercial STR until that study is returned, and the study has not been returned. And for that reason, you're putting me in an awkward position of having to tell this constituent, I cannot approve your STR application for commercial STR because we do not have the study back that is a comprehensive study of transient housing, including commercial STRs. So for that reason, I'm overruling CPC on this matter. But I would also like, and you can do this offline, for you to provide the city council with an update on when we might get. for you to provide the city council with an update on when we might get the return on the study, because that really impacts how we go forward making policy. And Councilmember Morell has something to say.
Yeah, I, I wanted to make a brief comment. I appreciate that y'all believe this can be done on a case-by-case basis. But really, all it does, especially on something of this magnitude and this controversial, is it makes it look like we're picking favorites. I mean, I, I, we've tried, I, I know Councilmember Harris, I believe you sent over the initial resolution requesting y'all look into commercial rentals right when we began residential, over, God, almost a year ago. We know it's a lengthy process. We want to get this done correctly. And I think that it would be in all of our best interest to wait until you guys come back with a comprehensive process that if we're gonna go forward and approve those on a case-by-case basis, it has to be with a framework in place. Because otherwise, everybody who gets denied going forward, we've already been through litigation. We're, I think, in appeals for current residential litigation. Let's just open up the door for third parties who don't get approved through the case-by-case basis to then come back and sue us and say we're picking favorites. So we appreciate the time and effort you've done in reviewing this. It's just that with how prevalent short-term rentals are, with the kind of dubious lack of enforcement, it just seems to be opening a Pandora's box. So I support Councilmember Harris's efforts.
I, I totally understand, and I wish that we also had that study complete. It's been a much lengthier process than we anticipated. Um, but there is an appeal process that is embedded in the I Z D, and people do have the right to appeal. And there are standards that were part of that I Z D when it was adopted. So perhaps maybe it, it needs a, a text amendment to change the appeal process. Um, because we don't want people paying to go through that appeal process if the inevitable result is that they'll be denied.
I appreciate those comments, and I know that the I Z D is up, uh, for expiration, I think, in November. And until we get that study back, I think what we will do is continue the I Z D prohibiting commercial S T Rs until we get the study back and some guidelines from you all. So, um, I've moved. Jeruso has seconded. I don't have your card, Mr. Burnside, but come on up and speak. All right, that's fine. You can speak. I don't have your card.
So this is one of the things where I still do have emotion, and emotion's anger, and I'm not frustrated, I'm pissed. I read the thing. They have standards. They have standard number two. They have standard number seven. And if you read the staff report on standard seven and standard two, it basically boils down to, "We're gonna save the best places in this city for our guests, and we're gonna leave our residents the crappy part of the town." That's what it boils down to. So if you haven't read the staff report, I strongly suggest that you look at number seven and number two. Because it boils down to, "We can interpret how we want to because you didn't define these things, and we'll determine how we want to define them, and then we'll do it all for our guests and not for ourselves."
I also have a card from Elizabeth Holder. Elizabeth, please state your address.
Hello, I live at three thousand Tulane Avenue. Um, I would like to start off by saying thank you for the opportunity to speak. Regarding the appeal to permit a commercial short-term rental at four-two-four Third Street, I urge the council to consider the broader implications in providing measures. Just as we are cautious about preserving the character and the integrity of our historic districts, we should also be mindful of preserving the cultural and historical integrity of regions like Palestine. In both cases, unchecked land use decisions can destroy the characteristics that define these communities.
Ms. Holder.
And they have been historically witnessed by Israel's illegal occupation of Palestine.
Ms. Holder.
And the ongoing.
This is, is this germane to this particular issue? It is not.
You turned my microphone. Is it on? Okay. Um, I would like to end this by saying, as long as we're sending over our tax money to Israel to fund a genocide before keeping it in New Orleans, I will continue to speak about Palestine. It is absolutely germane. Trans rights are human rights. Thank you very much.
Okay, so I've moved. I had a second by Councilmember Jeruso. All in favor? Six yeas. Thank you.
At the top of page twenty-nine, we have ordinance calendar thirty-three one eighty-three by Councilmember Williams by request. This has been continued to the meeting at six-twenty. At the bottom, ordinance calendar number thirty-four two seventy-seven by Councilmembers Thomas Harris and Green by request. This has been deferred to six-twenty meeting. At the top of page thirty, Legislative Grouping.
Oh, at twelve o'clock, huh?
At the top of page forty, sorry, at the bottom of page forty, we have motion M twenty-four two fifty-three by Councilmember Thomas, approving and granting the applicant's request for zoning document number forty-one twenty-four, subject to five provisos as stated in the City Planning Commission report.
Guys, start your report, please.
Yes. This is a request, uh, for conditional use to allow a large childcare center in an S R S suburban single-family residential district on Reed Boulevard. Uh, the site is currently developed with a two-story commercial structure, and the applicant is proposing to use the first floor of that structure uh, as a childcare center with four classrooms. There are no positions to this request at the City Planning Commission hearing, and CPC recommended approval subject to five proviso.
The center's gonna serve fifty kids and is supported by the community. There was no opposition, opposition at all. Uh, move adoption. Second by Councilmember King. Vote your machines. Five yeas, no nays. The matter's approved. Thank you. We have a speaker on this?
Yes.
Okay, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
My name is Jacqueline Mayo, and I live at fifty-eight oh three Winchester Park Drive. I am co-owner of the soon-to-be childcare center, and I want to thank you all for my support.
Sorry about that, Ms. Mayo.
That's all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
At the top of page thirty-two, we have ordinance calendar thirty-four thousand six eighty-seven by Councilmember Green by request. An ordinance to provide for the designation of public property within a designated area of the city of New Orleans as a temporary clean zone during a time period beginning at six a.m. Monday, July first, twenty twenty-four, and continuing through and until six eleven fifty-nine p.m. on Monday, July eighth, twenty twenty-four, relative to the use of these areas in conjunction with the twenty twenty-four Essence Fest and related activities to provide for temporary prohibition of certain permits in a clean zone area, to provide for temporary prohibition of the transaction of certain businesses and/or commercial activity within the clean zone area, to provide for the imposition of fines and penalties of, for violations of this ordinance to establish the clean zone as the area bounded by Contra Trainix, First Way, Chapatula Street, Earn Street, proceeding across the Mississippi River to the West Bank levee, Esplanade Avenue, Bagundi Street, Clue Street, St. Claude Avenue, Montecute Street, North Ramapo Street, St. Rock Avenue, St. Claude Avenue, Spain Street, North Ramapo Street, Esplanade Avenue, North Clayborne Avenue, Tulane Avenue, and South Broad Street, excluding the Louisiana Superdome property and the New Orleans Smoothie King Arena property, the, in the Ernest and Morell Convention Center property, to provide a sunset period for applicability and otherwise to provide re-respects thereto. There is an amendment to this ordinance by Councilmember King, an amendment to reduce the boundaries of the clean zone. In the preamble, line seven, after area, add to establish a special process to approve additional local business activity within the clean zone. In the preamble lines ten through twelve, delete the words Bagundi Street, Clue Street, St. Claude Avenue, Montecute Street, North Ramapo Street, St. Rock Avenue, St. Claude Avenue, Spain Street, North Ramapo Street, and Esplanade Avenue. Number three, on page two, after the sixth recital, add the words, "Whereas the city of New Orleans and the Essence Fest desires to support local minority and women-owned businesses," and on number four, in section one, line five through seven, delete the words Bagundi Street, Clue Street, St. Claude Avenue, Montecute Street, North Ramapo Street, St. Rock Avenue, St. Claude Avenue, Spain Street, North Ramapo Street, Esplanade Avenue. Number five, on page three, after section two, add a new section as follow and renumber subsequent sections accordingly. Section three, the Essence Festival shall establish a special process to approve additional local small business activity within the clean zone that is consistent with the other provisions of this ordinance. On page, number six, on page three, section three, line seventeen, delete the period and add, "Unless approved by Essence for local small businesses and properly permitted street vendors who have been approved and credentialed by Essence."
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, we also, we have Ms. Jade Russell here, uh, representing Essence. And could we have Ms., uh, Mrs. Lisa Lexus come down? We have some questions as well, uh, for, for, uh, Ms., for the, for the administration. So before we, before we get started, um, I'll give the floor to Ms. Russell. Ms. Russell, as you know, we've been having a lot of comments and concerns, myself, as well as, as well as all of my colleagues have received questions surrounding the impact of the clean zone. How does this affect small and local businesses? As a, as a, an official Essence representative, I'm gonna ask you, uh, what is Essence doing to, to work slash support the local businesses of this city?
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Jade Brown Russell, I'm with J D Russell Consulting, but I am a consultant to Essence Festival. Uh, I want to thank each and every one of you for allowing me to be, uh, here before you, uh, today. Uh, I want to thank you, uh, as a council. Uh, our team has met with, uh, or, or spoken with each one of you on this matter. Uh, and we've worked with, uh, with all of you, uh, on the issues, uh, that Councilmember, uh, King, um, just, uh, referenced and the concerns that were raised, and I'm hoping that we have been able, um, to, uh, respond appropriately to the issues that have been raised. Uh, I, I do want to especially, uh, thank, um, Councilmember King and his staff, who have been working, uh, closely with us on the ordinance itself. Uh, and I, I do, uh, understand that there are some amendments. Um, I want to thank, uh, Councilmember Moreno as well, who, um, has helped us on, uh, the, um, boundaries, uh, of, of the, the clean zone. Uh, Councilmember King, uh, and I have gone back and forth on that, and I know that that was a sticking point. Uh, listen, Essence Festival, uh, has, uh, established and always prides itself on, uh, being really a platform uh, to celebrate all that is black culture and, and black excellence. Essence Festival, uh, since its establishment, uh, in the Morell administration, uh, has been enriched by this city and takes its responsibility to the city of New Orleans very, very seriously. As Essence Festival grows, of course, and it has grown over time, our owner, uh, and our leaders are committed, uh, to growing with New Orleanians. Uh, for months, there has been considerable private, uh, conversations and negotio, negotiations relative to the clean zone uh, ordinance that all major festivals, uh, and events benefit from. Uh, and I do, uh, want to make sure that we, um, understand and underscore that a clean zone is not something that is novel to Essence Festival. Uh, major events that come through this city have clean zones. We have had clean zones for many, many years. Uh, the Super Bowl, uh, historically and, um, prospectively ha, will have and has had clean zones. Uh, French Quarter Festival, Jazz Festival, um, have all had clean zones, and so this is not, uh, a, a novel, uh, concept. Uh, our goal has been and remains to ensure that Essence Festival, its partners, and its sponsors, and the public uh, enjoy the very best experience. Uh, to ensure we better accommodate the local small business community, Essence Festival, uh, is, uh, offering, uh, to establish a special credentialing process, um, that I know we'll talk about for local small businesses to operate, um, within the festival clean zone after approval. Um, this special credentialing process for, uh, local small businesses to be established by Essence will ensure that we sanction and support local small businesses even more uh, and protect the existing partnerships and interests of the festival for, uh, adverse competitors. Uh, in the coming days, of course, we'll be releasing, uh, more additional next steps on that, uh, new partnership with the city and, and the council, uh, as well as frequently, uh, asked questions about the clean zone. Um, I know, uh, Councilmember King, uh, actually asked us for this so that we can post this, so, um, folks can, can see those responses to the frequently asked questions. As they come, we'll, uh, we'll populate those F A Qs. Uh, and if there are any other issues, we'll definitely have a open process for responding to those, uh, questions as well. Uh, again, I want to thank the council. I want to thank, uh, Councilmember King for working with us, and I hope, uh, that this ordinance can be amended to reflect, uh, this new, uh, uh, partnership, uh, with you all. I, I thank you for your, uh, your time, and I'm open to questions.
I have a, Councilmember Thomas, his name is on the board, but I do have a question. Just want to unpack what you just stated, what we've been working on. Um, so if I have an established business in the French Quarter, which is in the footprint of the clean zone, I can now work with Essence and be able to use Essence's name and branding to a certain degree to have, uh, on my, to have an official event.
Yeah.
At my establishment.
So, so I'll, I'll, uh, respond that, that, that que, to that question in two ways. One, existing businesses that have existing permits that are not actually connected with, uh, the, the actual, uh, festival itself, these, these ordinances, these clean zone ordinances, do not impact those operations at all, right? I know, uh, Councilmember King, we've had conversations or questions that came your way. You know, should, um, would, would the, the clean zone shut somebody's business down? And the answer is absolutely not. Uh, the clean zone is, uh, literally an ordinance that, uh, that, um, focuses on, uh, streets, sidewalks, and, and basically right-of-way is what the ordinance actually talks about, right? And so we're not looking at, um, private, uh, or, or, uh, you know, um, basically private property. We're not looking at that. However, I will say this, and I have to underscore this. There is a difference between clean zone issues and intellectual property issues, right? And so, um, we had some issues in the past where we have bad actors that may be, uh, using or infringing on intellectual property um, uh, for Essence that is not, uh, sanctioned, right? And so that is the, the process that we're talking about. What we're saying now is, listen, the small businesses that are trying to, um, have an event in their space um, that is not infringing our, you know, intellectual property, that, that is not, uh, an, an issue. And actually, it's not really a clean zone issue, um, at all.
All right. Um, Councilmember Thomas?
Yeah, uh, first of all, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember, uh, uh, King. Uh, you, you had, you had mentioned, uh, in your comment, what major festivals and, and, and events benefit from. And it's okay for the major festivals and events to benefit, but there also needs to be a community benefit also. Uh, one of the most discouraging things in this community is that we talk about the two-hundred-and-twenty-million-dollar economic impact, the four-hundred-and-a-half-billion-dollar economic impact. And, and the African-American community, the disparity gap has gotten wider each time the events have gotten bigger. Just to take a walk back in time, you, you mentioned something I'm kind of familiar with, right? Uh, during the Morell administration, uh, when it had the clean zone ordinances, there were exemptions. Uh, T C A, the Youth Entrepreneur Program, and a couple of other, uh, 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 different, uh, programs that actually were able to set up near the dome or around the dome, because those things were negotiated within the agreement with the, with the N F L. And there's a difference between sanctioned and licensed.
Yes.
When you talk, when you talk about licensing.
Yeah.
You, you may want to explain what that difference is, because when it was able to be worked out in the past, that was done on the front end. Because they said these groups would not only be sanctioned by the city, but also licensed by the event sponsors. Could you walk down that road for me?
Yeah, and so wh, wh, what we are, um, really talking about in terms of this, this new partnership, uh, it, it actually will probably straddle both of what you're talking about. The licensing piece, um, typically is attached to some type of fee. But what we're, what we're saying is, for our, our local minority woman-owned businesses, we, we will essentially allow a, 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 um, free license to, uh, those small businesses. Um, and it'll be a, a sanctioned logo that we will allow, uh, small businesses to utilize, right? If they are, um, having an event, or if they want to put that in their, um, their windows, right, or for their, for their stores. Like, those kinds of things, we will, um, be working with small businesses in that way. Um, in terms of the sanction, what we're, we're, we're talking about is just having a process where people can register, right, so that we can understand, um, what those businesses are, what, for example, if they're, we talked about an event inside of a, of someone. So that we can understand what those businesses are, what, for example, if they're, we talked about an event inside of someone's business, right? We want to make sure that those events are not, you know, big brand competitors, right, with the sponsors that Essence has. We have a contractual obligation actually to ensure in good faith that, you know, major brands don't ambush, do ambush marketing in the city. And that is what our focus is. The clean zone is not aimed at trying to harm or hurt small businesses. This is not what we're trying to do.
But the clean zone typically, since its inception, cleans the area so that licensed organizations that are licensed, I remember an event with the NFL with Convention Center Boulevard for the Commissioner's Event. It was part of the clean area, but they shut down an event that was happening at a restaurant because it wasn't sanctioned and licensed by the NFL.
Well, I can't speak for the NFL, but I can tell you that Essence has never sought or, you know, made any efforts to try to shut down a restaurant that is, you know, not utilizing their, now, again, it goes back to the question that I responded to Councilmember King. There is a difference between a bad actor utilizing someone's intellectual property versus the clean zone, right? And so if you are infringing on someone's intellectual property, and again, I don't know the specific scenario that you're speaking of with the NFL, but again, there are two buckets that we have to look at when we're talking about those types of events.
And I don't mean to belabor this, but I'm just trying, kind of walking back to some of the reasons why, some of the reasons why. In the past, licensed vendors would complain about somebody who was not licensed. And this was actually before clean zones and in the inception of clean zone. Now, they were part of doing business in the city, but they weren't licensed by the event. I'm using the NFL as an example because I think how we deal with this, at some point, this is an issue now. It's going to have to be dealt with globally, not just event by event. Because we have Bayou Classic, we have Super Bowl, we have NCAA events, we have French Quarter Fest. Maybe this is for the administration. Is there any thought about folk being grandfathered in or negotiations with being licensed and sanctioned so that those folk will know before the event happens?
Yes. Good afternoon. With that, we have taken those steps. In 2022, the administration met with Essence and knowing that there is a clean zone, we wanted a way to incorporate our local businesses within the footprint. And so what was created in 2022 was a marketplace. It was a marketplace for our local-owned businesses to have an opportunity to vend at a very nominal fee. That took place in the whale parking lot right in front of the Convention Center. That took place again and grew in the parking lot last year. This year, Essence has incorporated those local businesses, and I believe the numbers of the local businesses have grown. And they are now going to be a part of the marketplace that is inside of the Convention Center, which we were elated to hear because of our weather. All businesses will now benefit from the same local traffic and visitors that are going to be looking at all sorts of setups that are within the Convention Center and then have the benefit to actually merchandise and market their businesses in that Convention Center. So that is one step that we have taken to incorporate our local businesses through an opportunity to vend and be exposed to that crowd.
Well, last year, there were some changes with the Convention Center. Then many of the vendors who operated within the Convention Center were placed outside of the Convention Center. Has any thought to renegotiating or fixing that piece?
Yes, they are inside. This year's Essence Festival for 30th year is all of them are inside. There'll be no vending outside in that heat.
And the last thing I'll say, I'm only trying to share because I think at some point, there has to be a global ordinance that deals with each event, especially given what folk non-entrepreneurism and people are doing business. When you look at the boundaries of the clean zone, most major events are going to be downtown, riverfront, Convention Center, or at the Superdome. We know that within those boundaries, especially some of the high economic areas, they don't have any black business at all. Period. They don't exist. So if there isn't a special exemption or a special licensing relationship where you're identifying African-American businessmen and women to do business with the event sponsor or holder or license, then, I mean, at one time with the Canal Street of the French Quarter, got four out of a city that's 60% black. So if you're using that zone to say, oh, you can operate in this zone, where ain't no black folk doing, there are very few black folk doing business in that zone. So you would have to, so you would have to have a special provision similar to what I think Mayor Morial did back in the day, was he said, hey, hold on a second, let's identify some folk who can actually be licensed and sanctioned.
And just hearing from the clarification that you're giving, this program that we're talking about would actually cover that. We're not focusing on just small businesses, black businesses, minority businesses, women-owned businesses that have a, you know, brick and mortar in the zone. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about small businesses that are looking to, you know, exchange, basically have, do business within the zone, right? And so I think this program that we're talking about covers what you're talking about. Now, we would love to sit with you and look at other ways that we can expand it possibly based on the experience that you have. But what we're suggesting is that we would have both of those. It would be a sanctioned license, free license for black and brown businesses, women-owned businesses in the city.
Well, you know, I don't know that experience matters politically because a lot of times folk don't ask me. And then after the fact, we find out what the real deal is. So this is a different environment we have in there. But what I am offering is, this is going to be a major issue moving forward. Whoever y'all want at the table to work it out or to work out something globally. I know Councilmember King has made some amendments and some exemptions, right, to the ordinance to cover some of what you're talking about. But we still live in a city that more money passes through than stays here. Especially when you look at, especially when you look at the third of the population, who the earnings gap is wider now, the income gap is wider now. So I'm just saying, moving forward, especially with the administration, there has to be an effort to say, hey, look, we're going to negotiate with these events. And look, I know the NFL at times is like the Gestapo. If they want to control everything, and I understand that. But also, if you can sit down with them on the front end and say, hey, look, you're going to make your money, but based on the economics, right, the social disparities in our community, we need some special exemptions here to create a greater pool for some economic viability. That's all I'm asking for. I think next, moving forward, you can't just look at certain people or certain locations. You have to look at the community and global because it's not enough to impact the disparity if you just pick and choose a few people. Thank you.
Thank you.
A lot. Thank you. Councilmember Morell?
Thank you. I guess I came into this meeting with some clarity, but now I have less clarity. So my issue is, is that I have been very vocal with Mr. King as well as others that there seems to be a gray area when it comes to enforcement of clean zones and this intellectual property issue. Intellectual property concerns, from my perspective, are separate from the clean zone ordinance.
Agreed.
I think part of why we ended up in the train wreck that was the clean zone issue last year is that that was an intellectual property dispute that was pursued under the clean zone ordinance. I know that we invoke French Quarter Fest quite a bit, and Mr. King deals with both. But I will tell you, like I've told many people who have looked at this issue, the clean zone works best when the city's enforcing the clean zone, not when third parties are enforcing it. Because when the city's actually enforcing the clean zone, it is done in such a way where it is an educational process, not a punitive process. And I've expressed repeatedly that I think that French Quarter Fest is a great example. When you have a vendor at French Quarter Fest that's operating in a way that may, that is in violation of the clean zone, you have French Quarter Fest officials, you have NOPD go out and say, hey, you're doing this the wrong way. And that person has an opportunity to comply, and there's not litigation. There's not hiring lawyers. There's not this whole chilling effect where you have a monolith group and a little group in that disparity and power. And I think it's something that we really have to resolve as a city going forward. As Councilmember Thomas said, there has to be kind of a wholesale conversation. If we're going to have these, we have to really express what the limitations are on a clean zone and that they shouldn't be used by third parties to bully businesses that might be in violation. That I think that if we're going to have them, and they are necessary in some instances, they need to be done the most limiting way possible that really puts the city in the middle of it. Because I think in many instances, the city, I mean, I know from my perspective and from Councilman King's, when you look at what happened last year, had the council or the city been involved when the infraction occurred, it wouldn't have escalated to what it turned into. But we won't. We weren't. And I think we were all involved in the backend trying to disentangle kind of like a train wreck, car wreck, train crash that all happened simultaneously. So I think that as we're trying to deal with both Essence, Super Bowl, and inevitably the other events that come forward, there really needs to, I know last year, we talked about doing this, and it really didn't happen because of the variety of other crises that have popped up in the city in the interim. But there has to be kind of a large-scale conversation on what the process of gaining a clean zone looks like, what the steps are in that process, how these ordinances would go to committee, how they'd be publicly discussed, how different organizations would have to make the case why they need it. I know that, for example, when we did French Quarter Fest as clean zone, they were very transparent with coming here, like you're doing today, and saying, this is why we need it. This is the purposes of it. This is how it will be done. I think everyone, whether it be a small festival like French Quarter Fest or whether it be the Super Bowl, they have to go through a public process expressing specifically why it's necessary, why the geographic boundaries are necessary, and how the city and that organization are going to interact with businesses that are dealing with it. But it's just, I'm glad today, what's happening today is infinitely better than what happened last year, but this still needs to be improved upon. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Morell. We have Councilmember Moreno, followed by Drusso.
Thank you. To both of you all, thank you for being here today. I just want to make sure that everyone is understanding exactly the changes that are being amended in this particular piece of legislation. So first, the clean zone, let me just start, the clean zone that we are looking at now is smaller than the clean zone from last year's Essence Fest. And it is also smaller than the clean zone ordinance, which was filed originally. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So this clean zone now no longer has that, it had like a little bit of a tail. Yeah, it had like a tail that ran up to around like Cafe Istanbul, correct? And so that is now removed. So it captures a clean zone that is just really within what we, I guess we call the entertainment district, which is downtown New Orleans, the CBD, French Quarter, and going into the Convention Center, near the Convention Center area, which is consistent with other clean zones that we have seen for major events and which is likely consistent to what the Super Bowl may be asking for coming in the next few weeks or month or so. So I just wanted to make that particular piece clear and make sure I had that right. So then the second piece is on this section about establishing a process to approve additional local small business activity within the clean zone that is consistent with other provisions of this ordinance. So I just want to make sure that I understand this correctly. So let's say that, you know, there is a, let's say, a black-owned business restaurant on Bayou Road, which there is one. And we all go there. But there's a business there. And let's say that this individual would now like to have an event within the clean zone that we're seeing here. What you're saying is that this owner would have to then register with Essence, or how would this work?
No, they don't have to register, right?
This is if he wanted to do something, let's say, within the clean zone. Obviously, his restaurant's someplace else, but he wants to do something in the clean zone.
If he wanted to do something inside of the clean zone, again, if he's inside of the clean zone, inside of a building, right? Again, the clean zone doesn't attach there. Well, we're suggesting-
But he wanted to have a pop-up.
When you say a pop-up, you mean outdoors?
Yeah, like an outdoor pop-up.
Right. So again, then the clean zone would actually attach because if it is in a sidewalk or, you know, if it's a pop-up on the sidewalk, yeah, it is. But what we're suggesting is that those small businesses can register with Essence Festival, and that would be a free process. And they literally would be sanctioned to do that. They would be-
And that's what I'm talking about. What's different now is that you all are saying that for these local businesses who would want to, you know, participate in doing events within the clean zone, not inside of buildings, but outside as potential vendors, that now that they would have their fees waived.
Yes. But let me give you a couple of points of clarification. One, that we're doing this because the clean zone from us, for us, I don't, we can't speak to other festivals or major events. For us, the clean zone was never, you know, focused on small businesses. Never, it never was, right? And so for us, you know, extending this to small businesses, we are very, very comfortable with doing that with one exception. And that exception is we're making sure that small businesses are not co-ops by larger brands, right? Where they're going to ambush and you, and basically use this process to, you know, basically get into the clean zone. And so that's why we are asking them to go through those, the registration process to ensure that it is not a big brand that is competitive with our major brands.
So what you all are trying to do is to find a path to support small businesses here in our city to be able to participate, but not necessarily have the huge, large, major corporations, national, international corporations come in and kind of take over your event. I got it. Okay. Thank you.
One quick comment, Councilmember Drusso. Just, so let's just say, who's a sponsor for Essence?
I'm sorry?
Who's a sponsor for Essence? Like, is it Coca-Cola?
Yes. It's one of them. There are several others.
Let's use them. And tell me if I'm right or if I'm wrong. So if Coca, so if a person has a pop-up or an event, you don't want them to now be sponsored by Pepsi? Under the guise of, at first, I'm a small local business, Pepsi gets wind of it, now they come in and say, hey, put the Pepsi brand on. That's what you're really trying. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. It's one of, okay. Councilman Drusso?
Thank you. I think most of my comments will be directed to Ms. Alexis, so it's good to see you, Ms. Russell. First, I think like Councilmember Thomas, what we want to see is just consistency is whether it's the Super Bowl, the Sugar Bowl, Bayou Classic, Jazz Fest, Essence, the rules are the same, kind of that the geographic boundaries are the same, as much consistency. Because what I, and obviously Jazz Fest would be a little bit different, but for everything else, it's in the downtown corridor. We were getting questions, I got a question from a vendor who still didn't know what the rules were. And I think when you have more consistency, that makes things a lot easier for everybody, number one. Number two is, I agree with Councilmember Morell, which is enforcement is everything. My strong preference is that it's with the city as opposed to somebody else. I will also say, though, that means that it would be good for the city to tell everybody, the community, Essence, vendors who are there, this is how we're going to do it. Finance will be here. If you're selling in the middle of the place where you're not supposed to be, we're going to, we're going to make sure you've paid your sales tax. Safety and permits will be checking if you don't have the permit to make sure you've done this correctly. I think, I think part of this is, we're talking so abstractly right now and not concretely enough so people exactly know. Now, look, I'm sure there's some businesses that've been through this 30 years and they know what it is. But I think people don't know, and the more that we can educate and make sure, again, we both have consistency in terms of how it is drawn up and also in terms of how it's enforced by the city preferably better. Last year, and I don't mean to pick at a scab, but I feel like I need to do it, the administration backed away when there were problems with the clean zone. And so I'm asking now to make sure- asking now to make sure that we have a record that the administration unequivocally supports this clean zone.
The administration supports this clean zone, yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilmember King.
All right, no problem. Thank you, Councilmember Drusso. Okay, we have quite a few comment cards. I'm just give them, go in the order they were given to me. Mr. Kevin Griffin Clark. And once again, just to be consistent, we've done name and address, if you're a paid actor.
Good afternoon. My name is Kevin Griffin Clark, 2138 St. Bernard Avenue, New Orleans, Louisiana. For the most part, that we have seen trickle-down economics does not work. And so we have a lot of players that are coming into this situation and making a lot of money. We hear about the 200-something million dollars every year, and that money does not come down to a small business. I, like the rest of you, am confused as well with a lot of this, and with all due respect to Ms. Russell and Ms. Alexis, two people who I have a great relationship with, for the most part, this is foolishness. Essence is a guest in our city. All of the, all of the council people up here are married. All of the council people up here are married. There's no way in the world that you will allow me once a year to come into your home and set precedent and rules for what goes on for you, your home, and your children. If I am a small business, let's say, we're talking about Bayou Road, if I'm a restaurant and I serve Pepsi products, and Pepsi wants to come into my business where I pay taxes 365 days out of the year and wants to do business with me, that has no right, Essence has no right to tell me what to do with my business. They are overreaching. This has been 30 years. This has been 30 years of Essence, and I understand that there's, for the past few years or so, there's been new ownership and new management. However, the things of this city have not changed, for the most part, when it comes down to this. Again, we have not seen the the small, and when I say we, I mean the small, black, and minority businesses have not seen the economic inflow and impact of this money that comes in every year, whether it is Essence, whether it is Super Bowl, Sugar Bowl, or anywhere else. And this, the the information in this clean zone is foolishness, and I'll keep it at that. Thank you, guys. We got work.
Brown. Brown, you have-
Sure. I, one, I, you know, and I I respect Kevin immensely. I I want to just make sure that there is not a a lot of misinformation on what the clean zone is and what it's not. The clean zone, again, is not going to stop a business from serving, just in the the example that was was given, another beverage company, right? It's not going to stop businesses from, you know, continuing all of the regular, you know, things that that business, you know, does. This is focused on things that are happening in in public places, so sidewalks, streets, right-ofways, right? We're talking about signage, we're talking about those kinds of things. We're not, we're not looking internally. So for example, in the example that was given, if if a a restaurant decided that they wanted to have a a reception for another a a company that is not a sponsor, we cannot stop them from doing that. However, what we're suggesting is, we are allowing our our intellectual property, our name, our brand, extend it. However, if you are using or working with companies that are competitive to our sponsors, we we unfortunately, we can't extend that license, that sanction, to those particular small businesses. Now, that is not to say that you can't do what you want to do in your in your restaurant in that example.
Right.
So again, I just want to make sure that everybody understands what the clean zone is, but more importantly, what it is not.
And and I I won't wait for Mr. Griffin to come in, I don't want to say something that he didn't mean, or miss mix, get his words mixed up, so I want to ask him a question and just clarify something when he comes back. We have, well, they're, they're not here, DJ Johnson?
I want to say, name is DJ Johnson, address is 1030 Elysian Fields Avenue. I'm the owner of Baldwin and Company Bookstore here in New Orleans. Just want to say thank you for your time. I appreciate the honor, it's a pleasure to be here. DJ. I want to start by say that I think it's appropriate for me to identify, this is not necessarily a matter of trademark, copyright, and infringement and intellectual property protection in terms of my opposition to the Clean Zone ordinance. We have state, city, federal laws that protect trademark, copyright, intellectual property laws 365 years, days a year. This is not a matter of that. This is a matter of restricting and banning operations and business operations that occur every single day within our city. And I also want to say that I've been impacted by this two years in a row. So in 2022, to go to the example of a competitor coming into the marketplace and hiring a local business to host an event, so in 2022, Spotify had an event at the International House Hotel. They contacted Baldwin and Company, bought almost $20,000 worth of books, and asked us to put a pop-up at the International House Hotel. We set up a pop-up. We gave out all the books for free. They paid $20,000 just for us to give everyone books for free. What this Clean Zone ordinance does, it disallows activities like that for other individuals and businesses to come inside of the city and help support other local businesses that may not be a part of Essence. And if I may focus on in the year after that, of course, I understand Essence was said that it has no intentions of shutting down businesses, but they actually did. When they filed a lawsuit, they walked into my business at 7:30 a.m., handed me a subpoena and also a lawsuit saying that I needed to be shut down. So maybe that's not the intent, but that's how it was exercised. So I do agree that the council should take those rights away from a third party.
Mr. Johnson.
And if I may also just point out some of the-
Mr. Johnson, Mr. Johnson, your time is up. I'm giving you a couple more seconds to finish your your comment.
Okay. All right, so I just want to point out some clauses. So there are clauses, section, in section 3HJK, these clauses, they grant exclusive rights to Essence Communications, allowing them to control commercial activities within the clean zone. They restrict local businesses from advertising, promoting their own goods and services. I also want to point out some disadvantages within clauses three, it's B, C, D, E, F, G, and I M, and these clauses collectively limit the ability to local businesses to operate thereby reducing potential revenue opportunities. Businesses will be particularly disadvantaged as they are effectively excluded from operating. Also, there are constitutional concerns, where section 3F8K in section 12, they restrict the sound amplification and advertising and promotional displays that infringe upon the First Amendment and constitutional right of businesses, limiting their ability to communicate with public additionally, while creating designated public participation areas. So if I want to protest, if I am opposition of this, then Essence can tell me where I have to protest, and they also designate a time that I can protest. That is a violation of my constitutional rights. I know you're about to tell me I don't have time, so thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Okay, so I just want to clarify, I didn't want to make anything more confusing. So Mr. Griffin Clark, Bayou Road isn't in the clean zone. I know that was an example that was given. So if Pepsi is served, or another competitor is served on Bayou Road, that wouldn't be affected because it's not in the clean zone. I I, even, and if it was in the clean zone, they still can do it as their normal operation in the business, so, yeah. I don't want, I don't want to confuse anybody more, I just want to put that out there.
So excuse me, just, and just for clarity, I'm not saying serving, I'm saying if if I'm if I'm serving Pepsi products, that mean I'm a partner with Pepsi. And if Pepsi wants to come in and partner with me to do an event, I should be able to do that. Again, because I pay taxes, I pay rent, or whether I own this, or I pay a mortgage or whatever, 365 days out of the year, not just the seven or eight days, maybe two weeks that Essence is here. They should not infringe upon my right to do business with whom I want to do business with.
Understood.
They do, they do business within the quarters and within downtown district. If I'm, let's say Espinade Avenue is on there, I know that's on there. But if if I have a restaurant on Espinade, and again, if I'm serving Pepsi, I have a partnership with them, and if corporate contacts me and wants to do an event during the first through the eighth, which is also egregious, because you're not even doing business at the Dome or anything the first two, three of those days, and then you also cut off at the end when you're not even doing business at all, it's overreaching. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Understood. Melvin Ferdinand? Melvin Ferdinand?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Melvin Ferdinand. Born and raised here in New Orleans, Louisiana, graduate of St. Augustine High School, Tulane University, served in the United States Marine Corps for 22 years and retired. I love this city. I love what it represents, and this is not to downgrade or belittle Essence in any way, shape, or form, but I will ask, and for now, this is a rhetorical question, who is in charge of the city of New Orleans during the week of Essence Festival? Is it, is it the mayor in conjunction with the city council representing the citizens of this city, or is it Essence? I think that question needs to be answered. Additionally, I would add that upon retiring from the Marine Corps, I started driving Uber. I did it for four years and absolutely loved it. As we all know, there would be thousands of visitors in our city during Essence. Are we required to take those or transport those visitors who will undoubtedly utilize the rideshare services to a designated area that is outside of the clean zone so that they get to their destination? Or should we say to those visitors visiting our lovely city, we can only take you so far because there's a clean zone enacted during this week of Essence Festival? So I go back to the question I just asked, who is in charge of the city of New Orleans during the Essence Festival? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Reggie Ford?
To me, y'all the greatest council ever. Simple, thank y'all for always helping us. Ms. Russell, you come in and see that a turbulent time where our city is losing its autonomy. A lot of entities coming in here trying to control things and everything, but that has nothing to do with today. A perfect example of a clean zone that I seen adjusted and that worked for the people in the corporation was Jazz Fest this year. I was able to see people do commerce right in front of Jazz Fest, they let them sell everything but alcohol, textiles, food, beverages, give out stuff. It was amazing. In the streets, on the sidewalk, everybody's making their money. Jazz Fest made their money off of Rolling Stones, and that was accomplished because they adjusted and scaled back their clean zone. At one time, they wasn't even letting people sell their own parking spaces on their private land without a own permit from the city. And then the council adjusted it, and we had a perfect year where everything coexists. With this clean zone, thank you for shrinking it. I see y'all shrunk it a little bit. But the problem is, on section 3G, where they say all permits are suspended for businesses that's on sidewalks, city right-ofways, out in front of enclosed buildings. I'm a Jackson Square artist. All the artists are on the sidewalk. It's basically saying, we're suspended from doing it. Now, I know that's not y'all's intention, but that's what this letter of law say, and if it's in hand and get approved, it could be enforced. And with third parties enforcing things, they may not know the intricacies of our city, and somebody just could come and say, you can't sell on the sidewalk through what this is, July 1st through the 8th, which is a big, big timeframe, and people can't even give out beverages or samples in this clean zone. An upcoming business or something probably could benefit off the crowd or something. Long story short, I'm gonna say this, I love the Essence Fest, it's my favorite time of the year, and it's not because of monetary gains, because honestly, my business, for some reason, it don't make money selling art, we just don't make that much money on Jackson Square from Essence Fest. So I just go spend all my money at Essence Fest, buy extra tickets and give them away to my family and friends. I love y'all event, but this is too much in a city that has so many other things going on. Please reconsider section 3, B, and C, and also G. Thank you very much.
Ms. Russell, do you have a, do you have a copy in front of you?
Yes, I do.
All right. Yvette, Ms. Watkins? Watkins?
Watkins.
Watkins, yes.
I'm Yvette Grumion Watkins. I represent Riverwalk Outlet Mall, I'm the general manager there, and I'm also a local, of course. So I wanted to just kind of say, I am in the process of working with James Andrews on the New Orleans Musician Burial Fund, and we are trying to seek remedies on how to raise money and introduce this to New Orleans and tourists as well. So we are in the process of planning a event, which is a one-day, it was a four-day, we 've narrowed it down to a one-day music concert, July 4th, to represent what we used to have on the river as Go Fourth on the River. With the clean zone, we are unable to do this without asking permission from Essence to be able to do so. Riverwalk is a very, we do a lot of business, we pay a lot of taxes, you know, and we work with you all on a lot of issues and a lot of things that go on in the city. One of the other things I wanted to kind of touch on, I have been trying to work with Essence, I've had phone calls, we were communicating by email. As of recently, it has, no emails is being answered, and they're just not willing to, I guess, at this point, even work with us on it. We asked for them to partner with us and help the culture, the music culture, which is what Essence is, right? And I guess now it's falling on deaf ears. Also, I just want to say, the original intentions behind the clean zone was to protect the brand of a specific event, not to stifle all other businesses and events in downtown New Orleans. I understand the importance of protecting the Essence brand, but not at the expense of other vendors and events that bring vibrancy and diversity to our city. I am respectfully requesting that Spanish Plaza specifically, so I am able to work with a nonprofit organization to host an event, be removed from the clean zone altogether.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
Thank you for your time.
James Andrew?
Thank you, and what we are, I'm here to represent the New Orleans Musicians Burial Fund. We had so many musicians die, and we can't bury our musicians. We travel around the world and come back home, we can't bury our musicians, all right? So we need to have this burial fund for the future generations of our musicians that's born and raised here in New Orleans, and we are asking you to partner with us to do this concert at the Riverwalk, because our culture is so important to our city, our music, it's all we got. And we not exiting the U.S. Essence brand in no kind of way, we not trying to be associated with Essence. We want to preserve our culture here in New Orleans, and we want y'all to partner with us, and thank y'all.
Thank you. Ms. Mary Howell?
Hi, Mary Howell, 316 South Thurgenee Street. First of all, I want to say I'm disappointed in the way that this hearing has taken place today. We had asked to make a presentation here, and we were told there would be no presentations, and this is a very, very serious issue that we're embarking on. These clean zones are under serious, serious review all over the country, and a very serious question of the legality of them, the constitutionality of them, and it's very hard to address these issues in too many times. I'm going to speak as fast as I can, but I want you all to know that this is really unfortunate, that this is the way that this has played out. Secondly, I do want to say that Katie Schwartzman was not able to be here. She has sent you all a letter from the First Amendment Clinic for Tulane, pointing out some of the constitutional problems for the First Amendment and due process rights that are in this ordinance. The city has been sued twice before, this is not picking on- The city has been sued twice before. This is not picking on Essence. Twice before with the NFL Super Bowl and also with the French Quarter Festival. These clean zones, we've used this format, the same template. The city keeps bringing out year after year and it is deeply flawed. It's deeply flawed and I urge you to please pay attention to the language in this ordinance because it is completely defective and unconstitutional. And I want to point out some of the problems with it now. And I urge you to listen carefully because I'm gonna talk very fast. One of the things I want to talk about specifically is your own constitution. That's the city charter. We have a city charter here for the Home Rule Charter that provides that you, the city council, have the exclusive power to legislate. So if you look at section three, 101, paragraph one. "All legislative powers of the city shall be vested in the council." That's all. That's not, it's not the executive branch. It's not the administration. We have a separation of powers here and it's certainly that legislative power cannot legally be delegated to a private company. Let me say that again. You cannot delegate the legislative authority that you have under the city charter to a private company. What this ordinance does is very simple and this is, this is the heart of it. What it does is it lets a private company, in this case, it's Essence, but it could be any private company if you're gonna do this again, and I urge you not to. They get to approve what is a lawful act and what is an unlawful act. Look at, look at 3A. I beg your pardon. This is important, what I'm trying to say.
Ms. Howell, respectfully. We've been told by our council, you get 30 minutes per item. This has been going on for an hour. I'm just, I'm just following the rules that I was given. So thank you, Ms. Howell.
Okay, I'm gonna ask that a motion be made so that I can conclude these points because they're very important points. And I really think you all are embarking on something that you aren't even aware of what's getting ready to happen here. I would really respectfully request that if a motion could be made and seconded and voted on to allow me to continue the points I'm making. You all are getting ready to shut down sidewalk cafes. You're getting ready to shut down car services. You are outlawing the transaction of any business. Look at, look at 3B. Look at 3B, which is what you're getting ready to pass here. No person shall transact any business upon the public street sidewalks or right of way. And you are giving authority to Essence. They have a veto power over the city under section three on the advertising. They have the exclusive power to determine flags and banners.
No, we're not, we're not veto other people there at the time. She went over for a little bit.
You let them do a presentation. We asked to do a presentation, Mr. King, and you said there would be no presentations. You sent an email saying no presentations.
You're not being truthful, Ms. Howell.
I'm not being truthful? Is that what you said?
What I'm saying is, what I'm what I'm saying is, they, they have been requested by the council to come up and answer questions that the council had. No one is allowed to do presentations to respond. Everyone gets two minutes. That's what I'm saying, Ms. Howell. And you know that. So Councilman Moreno, four is yours.
So I did talk to our executive council about, on the amended version, which is section, section four, G, where it says, "All permits relative to the sale of merchandise in or transaction of business shall be suspended on the public street sidewalks or right of ways and, and outside of enclosed building." So if you look at the beginning of that section, it says that within the clean zone area, the following activities conducted by any person or entity, except those approved by both the city and Essence, shall be regulated as follows. So that means that G is a little bit contradictory because if you have a permit from the city, well, then you should be able to operate. So I think because this is contradictory in nature here, I personally believe that it should be struck from, from this section. Ms. Russell, I don't know if you have any comments on, on that. That's just how, how it reads.
Again, I, I think that clean zones, and I, I think several council members have spoken about the, the global nature of these clean zones. And I think we've even gotten some feedback from the public that, you know, these clean zones are very, very similar for, for other festivals. The, the, the language that is in this ordinance is the same exact language, with the exception of the amendment that was raised today. Has been in every clean zone ordinance. Again, I am not in a position to say whether, again, this is, this is the council's ordinance. And I'm sure that your, your legal counsel has already said, you know, how, their response to those sections. But we, we do lean on you all to let us know what is.
Because I think, I think it is covered with, in the beginning of that section, when it says "Activities conducted by any person or entity, except those approved by both the city and Essence." So I think that G is then a little contradictory. But then saying that the city, even though it permitted you, you're, you're no longer permitted when all you're really now seeking is that Essence approval. So it like strikes your permit, but then you now would have to go and get like, almost like a new permit and a new and also approval from Essence. You see what I mean? So it's a bit, it's, it's, the language just is very confusing and contradictory. I think.
And I'll also just focus on section four of, of the ordinance that says that nothing in this ordinance shall be construed as a repeal or a suspension of any existing laws prohibited or governing the issuance of permits outside of the clean zone geographical boundaries.
Right, outside of the clean zone, right. I mean, I, I think just for comfort's sake, I, I, I think just to make things more clear, I think it would be beneficial to strike section G. I'm happy to offer that amendment. And, you know, we can see how, how we vote if, if, if you're willing to accept that oral amendment.
Absolutely, that's fine.
And I guess the question is, is that a change that will be stricken from all clean zones going forward?
I don't know what other, other legislation will look like, but certainly if it's contradictory language, like what it is right now, I certainly wouldn't vote for something with that same contradictory language because I don't think it, it makes sense. So for consistency purposes, you know, the, the contradictory language for me is not something that's workable and it adds to confusion within the public. So you have my word that I wouldn't vote for a, or, or I would make sure to amend out if in a future document this language is in it. You're welcome.
Can, can I make one observation on that? If you look right above that, the section three.
This is not a back and forth. I'm sorry, Ms. Howell. We have to keep the council rules.
The veto power. They can, this is a crime. Y'all are making this a crime.
This isn't a back and forth. Your, your public comment period is over. Thank you.
Ms. Howell, we're, we're getting ready. Since, since we have amendments now, why don't we just amend them out of having any say whatsoever?
Thank you. That's, thank you. That would solve the problem. That would solve one of the problems. That would solve one of the problems. That's what happened with the NFL lawsuit that last year in Arizona. And there's a whole big controversy and there's a big issue about improper delegation to private parties to.
So I'm gonna offer up an amendment that they, especially if the city is sanctioned, that they should not be the final voice in terms of who gets licensed, so.
Absolutely. Because there are no standards governing them.
Since we're amending stuff now.
There are no standards that govern their use of that discretion. It is unbridled discretion. And that's a, that's a big problem, both for substantive due process and for the city charter. So that's, I would support that amendment. It's in two different places. Just they should not have any decision-making authority over whether something is a crime or not in our community.
Councilmember Thomas, can you, can you kind of explain that?
I think Claire, I think Mr. Art raises a good point. And then Mary is familiar with the challenges we had over the years. Well, we made exceptions, exceptions on the front. And that's why I tried to state that. In the past, when you did this, especially when there were organizations, you would make sure that they were licensed and sanctioned. Now, the part about whoever the event sponsor is having final authority, if that's a major hindrance, especially to what the city wants to do, then let's not, let's get them out of the, in terms of the approval.
Can you show me where that line is in the, in the legislation so I can, so we can read it?
Hold on. Let me get to this part with P, with G. "All permits relative to the sale of merchandise or transaction of business shall be suspended in the public streets or right, right of way." Why don't we add that the city will determine that?
Or why don't you just strike it?
Well, well, but I also want to add a clause so that they'll know that they don't have the final say. And so our lawyers, I'm not a lawyer. I know I try to play one every other Thursday. But if, let our attorneys find the proper spot to make sure that the ultimate authority lies in, lies with the city in terms of sanctioning who do its business. I don't want to misrepresent the legal field. But since we're amending stuff now. And, and, and right above A in section 34, that within the clean zone area, the following activity is conducted by any person or entity, except those approved by both the city and Essence. Take Essence out. Take Essence out. I'm glad I got a good lawyer on staff. Take Essence out. That's under section three. Right. Our staff attorney has recommended that. So we can get the language right with all of the amendments and the new amendments. That maybe we should table it and so that we could read something that's clean, that will address all these issues. I think, we've dealt with this long enough. I think we might as well get it right this time. But, but I'm not chairing the meeting. Councilmember Moreno, you are.
This is actually Councilmember King's item, so he has a floor. He's.
So what we'll do, I want to make sure this is done right. We're gonna table this for right now, have the legal, our legal experts make sure everything is being done decent, decent in order. We do have comments. We, we do have comments. Unfortunately, due to time, it's been over an hour, 15 minutes. We, we, I will read everybody's name. Mr. Burnside opposed. Mr. Norris Henderson opposed. Sierra Barn, Barn opposed. George D. Johnson opposed. Deborah, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce her last name, but Ms. Deborah opposes. Ms. Ashana Bygard opposes. Another, we're, it's gonna be, it's gonna be in a record. We respectfully have to, we, we, we have to move. We're not, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna move, we're gonna table this. We're gonna table this and, and come, and come back. Please, let's, 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 let's keep it moving forward. We got, we have another item. We're not done with this. We're gonna table it and make sure everything is done and come back. Understood, understood. So. We're not, no, no, Mr. Henderson. So we're not, we're not shutting anybody down. I just say we're gonna table it. So, all right, all right. So we just want to make sure everything is done right. So how about this? While our attorneys are making sure everything is being done properly, so we're not seeing the wrong thing or giving the wrong information, we'll just move on to the next item. When, when they're ready to come back, we'll finish discussing it. All right.
All right, everyone. All right. I have a, I have an actual special announcement. Please listen to this. So the Public Integrity Bureau has been called in due to the incident that happened earlier. They want to have a conversation with the audience, so they will be coming in to speak with you all. They've asked us to take a recess while they speak to the public and have a conversation with you all. When that wraps up, we will continue our council meeting. Thank you.
Seats. We're gonna come back from recess. Please take your seats. Madam Clerk, we had an item scheduled for one. We'll move to that one right now. Item 23, Madam Clerk.
At the top of page 41, we have motion M24-254 by Councilmember Thomas, directing the Department of Public Works to conduct a study and make recommendations regarding permanent options to protect, protect drivers from driving through floodwaters.
Well, thank you, Madam Clerk. This was a conversation that Councilmember Jeruso and I had some time ago. I don't know if you remember, Joe. But how do we begin to have barriers to protect folk? Especially because everybody's not aware of the interstate entrance or the trussels where water gathers. What do we begin to do, especially now increasingly that people are driving into those waters? I think the last time was an elder lady who had to be rescued. It was also a young lady and their kid who had to be rescued. How do we protect our citizens so that when they're standing water, there's some type of barrier or something to warn them? And it's a, as widespread flooding across the city increases in its frequency, it's necessary to protect drivers and safety, and add safety during flooding emergencies. This motion requests a study of a more permanent protection, options like gates as opposed to movable barricades and flashing lights, especially in those areas that have historically flooded for years. So any other comments on that? If not, I would move approval.
We don't currently have a quorum, so it's coming. Okay, hold on one second. Ms. Thomas.
It's been moved by me, seconded, seconded by Councilmember Morell. All in favor?
Aye.
Five yeas, no nays. And the resolution, I'm sorry, the motion is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jeruso.
Yeah, you gotta read it, huh?
At the bottom of page 36, we have resolution M24-246 by Councilmember Jeruso, a resolution calling an election in the May City Security District for Tuesday, November 5th, 2024.
Members, Mid-City has asked to get this on the ballot. We have to vote on this today in order to do that. A move for approval. Seconded by Councilmember Harris.
Madam Clerk, my staff had alerted the council.
Aye.
My staff had alerted the council weeks ago of I have a stand, I have a meeting and I had to pick up my son. So any other matters, I have about 15 or 20 minutes to deal with before I go attend to my family.
All right. Next up, we had an item by Councilwoman Moreno, I believe.
Yeah. On page 37, we have item 18. Motion M24-247 by Councilmembers Moreno and Morell, directing the City Planning Commission to conduct a public hearing to consider amendments to ordinance number 4264. MCS amended by ordinance number 26413. MCS has amended the comprehensive zoning ordinance of the city of New Orleans to amend Article 10, Historic Core Neighborhoods, Non-Residential Districts, Section 10.2.8, to permit educational facilities vocational use as defined by U standards in section 20.3. Z in the Vucaray Entertainment District.
Thank you. This motion requests CPC to review and consider amendments to Article 10, the Historic Core Neighborhood, Non-Residential Districts, to permit an educational facility vocational use as defined by U standards, Section 20.3. Z in the Vucaray Entertainment District, VCE. Vocational education and skills training necessary to fill jobs created by the many industries fueling the city of New Orleans economy. Vocational skills and training programs afford students practical experience, soft skills training and job referrals, and often increase the likelihood of being employed. It's critical that these programs are in close proximity to city turn, city centers, public transportation nodes, and the very industries tapping the public employee pipeline created by these vocational programs. I will move adoption. Can I get a second? Seconded by Councilmember Jeruso. Please vote your machines. Am I missing someone? All right. Five yeas, no nays.
At the top of page thirty-four, motion line over M. twenty-four, two twenty-five by Councilmember, Councilmembers Morell, Moreno, Morell, Jeruso, Harris, King, Green, and Thomas, amending and restating that the Rule forty-six of the Council Rules and Regulations be here, be and hereby to read as follows. Submissions to the Clerk of Council Rule six, forty-six point eight, electronic submissions, except as otherwise expressly provided by law or these rules. Any com, any communications or other submissions to the Clerk of Council may be made electronically by emailing a submission to the Clerk of Council at clerkofcouncil@nola.gov.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. This allows for electronic submissions to the Clerk of Council. Mr. Burnside, do you have a public comment?
Okay, so thirteen.
I call your, Burnside, twenty-two fifteen, Felicity, Rule number forty-six dot B. I'm against it fundamentally because it's not done in public and it's not done by an elected official. So during business, during meetings, there's a set agenda and there's an elected person who's making the decisions as to what is, I would say, germane, but that's not the number you're using here, my brain is not working. Uh, communication clerk does not pertain, so the clerk is not elected and there's no actual agenda for her to consult as regards pertinence. So I think that you're actually doing something ill-advised. Thank you.
All right, uh, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, make a motion. Moved. Seconded by Councilmember Morell, all in favor? Aye. One, two, three, we have five yays, no nays. The machines are not working. Six yays, no nays. Five yays.
At the top of page thirty-five, Resolution number R. twenty-four, two forty-two by Councilmembers Moreno, Morell, King, and Green, ratifying and approving the amendments to the HDLC Guidelines and Rules, Policies and Procedures Regarding Solar Panels in accordance with Section two dash one thousand of the Code of the City of New Orleans.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, this is revising the solar panel design guidelines to make it easier for people to have solar panels. I see no public comment, any public comment? No, I'll make a motion to adopt. Seconded by Councilmember Jeruso. All in favor? Aye. Five yays, no nays.
At the bottom of the page, Resolution twenty-four, two forty-three by Councilmember Moreno, supporting the work of the City of, City of New Orleans Food Policy Action Council, representing diverse interests and including representatives for agriculture, public health businesses, and food distribution, food access, and would like the Action Council to continue providing recommendations and advice to the City Council on healthy food and forming initiatives that will address the need for equitable food systems within New Orleans.
Um, this is on the Food Policy Action Council, this just works to reauthorize this council. Hakim, you're up first. Hakim, sorry.
No, it's okay. Good afternoon. Um, this may be a little not germane, but I wanted to start by condemning the force that was used on that person on their way out by the police here. It was definitely on the rough side, I think we'd all agree on that. I'll, I'll, I'll stop there. I'll move on to this resolution, so I wanted to support this, this resolution and this endorsement of, you know, it's working to promote equitable access to healthy foods. As, as a father of a, of a young child, I can, I definitely see how different individuals who may not be faced with economic issues tend to actually eat different things. So as growing up, when we were not well off, more of our food was, was what we'd consider garbage and didn't even know it, and then when we came out of that poverty, now we can start eating healthier food, so I totally understand that. Part of it is when we promote equitable access to food here, you know, locally, we should also condemn the starvation methods that are used against the Palestinian people in Gaza. Not only should we condemn this, I think that using food as, as a means of war, or without, without access to food, I'll say one statement, I'll try to stay germane, I think is, is so, is a, it's injustice, and I have one, I'm going to read one quote, and I want you to, that, that really actually inspired me, and I wanted to read it and I want you to guess who, who said it. It's talking about justice, and I think, you know, using starvation is a form of injustice. "A threat to justice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." What, this is, is specific to, to, to Ukraine, what Vladimir Putin is counting on is that people of this country, of this city, of the entire world, will simply go upon their way, ignoring what's happening in Ukraine. The fact that people across the world are galvanizing to condemn these awful acts of violence, to let Vladimir Putin and his economy know, we will not forget and we will not forgive. Does anyone want to guess who said those great words?
That's your time.
It was, it's actually J. P. Morell, and I really was inspired by those words.
That's your time.
It's pretty good, right?
That's pretty good.
I think we should say those same words about what's happening in Palestine, thank you very much.
Josh Tittlebaum?
Thought it was Dr. King.
Followed by Bryn Como.
I'm Josh Tittlebaum, uh, live on Duane Street. I welcome the City Council's support for the New Orleans Food Policy Action Council. Food PAC applies community-led recommendations for equitable policy change. That model should serve as an example for all local government. Food PAC's coalition of community orgs, experts, local leaders, and city residents ensures that the public's priorities are addressed. City Council should follow a similar model for setting its local agenda and any priorities communicated to our federal delegation, so the city's voice can be heard all the way in Washington. Currently, the bigoted positions taken by the state legislature speak over us, filling the void left by this council's dug-in inaction. By your silence, we are all implicated in the actions of that racist institution and by extension, in its support for the actions of the racist state of Israel. Pass a ceasefire resolution, consult relevant community partners, i.e. those whose advocacy work on behalf of Palestinian liberation.
Mr. Tittlebaum, stay germane.
There is a genocide going on, you won't listen to anyone in this community, I am going to keep reading. Personal stakes in supporting an end to Israel's slaughter of tens of thousands of Palestinians and its ongoing enforced starvation of millions more makes their participation invaluable to the drafting process. Currently, ordinary Israeli citizens are attacking aid convoys meant for Palestinians held captive in Gaza by Israel's military. Israelis even attacked a convoy belonging to the American Friends Service Committee. So far, our government failed to protect our brave humanitarians who work in dangerous conditions under constant threat by the.
Mr. Tittlebaum, please stay germane to the topic. All right, Mr. Tittlebaum. Bryn Como, Bryn? Is Bryn here? I'll put Bryn's card to the side. Grace Treffinger? She was here earlier, okay. Terry Frick? Come on up, Ms. Frick.
Good afternoon. As a native New Orleanian, raised and educated in Trumay, I support the city's endorsement of New Orleans Food Policy Action Council in promoting equitable access to healthy food. As we address the food justice locally, we must also condemn forced starvation and food insecurity echoing the struggles faced by Palestinians under genocide. As Palestinians were already being starved and made refugees on their own land and told to go to Rafah as a safe space, Israeli occupation forces bombed them as they slept in tents, burning them alive, and made possible with U.S. tax dollars that could be used to feed thousands of people here in the city of New Orleans at home alone. The U.S. President has the gall to say what's happening is not genocide, the State Department claims they have red lines and want the killing of civilians to stop, yet members of Congress of both political parties and service to corporate industries, which is more popular than machines, continue to find it send back for a price that focuses on Israelis' public strict enforcement entering this area as putting guns on the ground. We're not bombing or attacking stripers, mistaking the urgency and mowing the lawn. I applaud the voters in houses and demand immediate ceasefire as nine hundred and sixty cities across the United States have died. I'm confident we can figure out a way to spend money feeding people here versus bombing. The collective cost of your continued cycles as an elective body is publicity and genocide, the individual price, precisely for humanity. Palestinians desire that all the businesses be controlled.
You're not germane on the topic, Ms. Frick. Shreya Vasudivan? Followed by Deborah Levi Perlman.
My name is Shreya Vasudivan, and I'm here to support the city's endorsement of the New Orleans Food Policy Action Council in promoting equitable access to healthy food. And I'm just going to use this opportunity to remind the city that during IDA and many other disasters in the past, the World Food Program, or the World Central Kitchens was in New Orleans distributing millions of meals to New Orleans residents and residents across Louisiana in a time of disaster. And you guys worked with them and, and used that to make statements to, to uplift your own campaigns or uplift your own political standing in your communities. But whenever six of their aid workers were killed in Gaza, you made no statement. So you'll use them when they come to the city to support your own, uh, character or reputation, but whenever six aid workers are killed in Gaza, and we've been coming here since January, every single month asking for a ceasefire resolution, we get nothing but silence from you all. This is, uh, uh, an issue that is relevant to the city, we need a ceasefire resolution, this is an issue that we will not stop coming here on, I don't care how many times you tell us that this is not germane, we will remember every single time what you've told us, we will remember.
Deborah Levy Perlman? Come on up. Followed by Luke Felty.
Good afternoon, my name is Devora Levy Perlman, constituent in District B. I fully welcome this resolution to mitigate food insecurity in the city as well as would like to raise attention to food insecurity around the world, including in Palestine, where the Israeli fascist regime is imposing mass starvation on civilians. My message to this council, my message to this council is that nothing you say will deter our movement. We are seeing through all of the distractions, we're seeing through the smokescreens, we're seeing through all the tactics you use to suppress us, to silence us, we're seeing through all of the deflections. This includes your hand wringing over antisemitism, this includes the whole ruling classes and the whole corporate media's hand wringing over antisemitism, we see that for what it is, and I'm saying that as a Jewish community member, there are many of us, tens of thousands of Jewish people who have taken to the streets in solidarity with Palestine, so it has absolutely nothing to do with that. The people are waking up, that's what's happening. We're waking up and we're seeing through the illusions, we're seeing that our tax dollars are funding genocide in Palestine, we're seeing that our money in this city and our money in this country that we're paying.
Ms. Perlman stays, stay germane to the topic.
This is, this is relevant, this is exactly, this is, there's nothing more relevant than talking about this.
To the Food PAC.
Our tax dollars could be going to affordable housing, they could be going to healthcare, they could be going to fixing our infrastructure, they could be going to programming for youth, for education, but they're not, they're going to war, they're going to bombs for Israel.
Stay on the Food PAC.
This is relevant, it is all connected. This is a sham democracy, it's a torture democracy, because if this were a real democracy, the people, the governing bodies would see that the people are with Palestine.
Hey, 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 wait, 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 detective, wait, 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 it's okay. It's okay. It's okay. Hang on, hang on. Good, hang on, hang on. Everybody needs to stay germane.
The last thing I'll say is that our, a ceasefire resolution here is not the ceiling, it's the floor.
Thank you.
It's the floor, it's the bare minimum, it's to have a ceasefire resolution.
Thank you.
Let us speak.
Thank you.
Let us speak.
You can move away, you can move away. All right, officers. Officers. Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, officers, you can move, you can move to the side for, it's fine. Luke, Luke Felty? Luke Felty?
You thought two hundred people last time was too many? I mean, come on.
Luke Felty?
You are bullying us, you are bringing violence against us.
All right, Lu, Luke Felty?
I've already left in time.
We've got three more people. Luke Felty? Come on up, Luke, two minutes, followed by Fatima Khan, Serena Soji Born, and Elizabeth, looks like Holden or Holder, go ahead.
I'm going to try to keep this pretty brief, my name is Luke Felty, I recently started working in the New Orleans Health Department in April in a food access specialist position, which is a position that FPAC funded externally to increase the city's capacity for food security projects. I just want to commend and thank FPAC for the work that they're doing to increase equity in food access and food security, because right now, limited healthy food access, poor nutrition, and hunger are widespread in our city. They have sweeping effects on the physical and mental health of so many of our friends, family, and neighbors, and these burdens are not shared proportionately among the members of our community. Low-income residents experience significantly higher rates of hunger and food insecurity in New Orleans. These are issues that require us to reconsider our relationship with food and promote systemic change through effective policy. Accomplishing this takes great tenacity and adept hand, but I am confident that FPAC is up to the task and comforted to know that they will continue to advocate for a more just and equitable food system for all New Orleanians. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Serena Soji Born?
Hi, my name is Serena Sojic Born, I'm a New Orleans resident, eighty-four thirty-nine Sycamore Street. I am happy that the City Council is addressing food insecurity. This resolution actually reminds me of a New Orleanian who suffered food insecurity in the recent months. Her name is Samah Harris Maal. Samah Harris Maal was kidnapped by the IDF, by Israeli occupation forces, and forced to go into military prison, she's now facing charges in military court in Israel, and I haven't heard City Council say a word about Samah Harris Maal. This food insecurity resolution also reminds me of a recent act by the Louisiana State Police that threatened the food insecurity of the whole city where, um, in, after the Tulane encampments, where I was arrested at on three counts of battery and one count of criminal trespassing, at these encampments, we've had businessmen, business community members from throughout the city bring, um, restaurants, donate pizza, all kinds of food to this encampment. We, we had enough food that, that we could, we could keep the encampment going for days and days and weeks and weeks, and we were ready to donate that food, we were ready to donate that food to local food shelters, which I'm sure the City Council would have supported, but after it arrested me, after it arrested six other people that, on first Monday, and then two days later arrested fourteen students who are all facing trumped-up charges, the Louisiana State Police and the New Orleans Police Department, the same New Orleans Police Department that's been harassing us here for just giving public comments, this police department threw all that food in the trash, and what it could be doing, what it could have been doing here is just letting, letting the encampment stay, stay going and keep, keep moving forward, and let people protest for Palestine. And in the meantime, over thirty-six thousand Palestinians have been killed by Israeli airstrikes, Palestine is facing famine, the City Council has said nothing about this. We want to hear from you, stop stalling, pass the ceasefire resolution, listen to your constituents.
That's your time, thank you. Elizabeth Holder, followed by Catalina Gallagher. Ms. Holder?
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I support the city's endorsement of the New Orleans Food Policy Action Council in promoting equitable access to healthy food. As we address food, food justice locally, we must also condemn the forced starvation and food secure, insecurity echoing the struggles faced by the Palestinians under genocide. Last year, New Orleans spent, sent over twenty-nine million dollars to Israel to continue their genocidal regime, when we could have kept that twenty-nine, I see you're all on your phones, and could I have your attention, please, while I'm speaking? State Police and the New Orleans Police Department, the same New Orleans Police Department that's been harassing us here for just giving public comments, this police department threw all that food in the trash. And what it could be doing, what it could have been doing here is just letting, letting the encampment stay, stay going and keep, keep moving forward and let people protest for Palestine. And in the meantime, over 36,000 Palestinians have been killed by Israeli airstrikes. Palestine is facing famine. The city council has said nothing about this. We want to hear from you. Stop stalling. Pass the ceasefire resolution. Listen to your constituents.
That's your time. Thank you. Elizabeth Holder, followed by Catalina Gallagher. Ms. Holder.
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I support the city's endorsement of the New Orleans Food Policy Action Council in promoting equitable access to healthy food. As we address food, food justice locally, we must also condemn the forced starvation and food insecurity echoing the struggles faced by the Palestinians under genocide. Last year, New Orleans spent, sent over $29 million to Israel to continue their genocidal regime, when we could have kept that 29. I see you're all on your phones. Could I have your attention, please, while I'm speaking, Helena?
I'm listening. I'm listening.
I don't feel, I don't feel listened to.
Please, please continue.
I just would like to close this with thank you for listening, and please put a ceasefire resolution on the table.
Catalina Gallagher, followed by Felix Allen.
Hi. I think you said my name earlier, but I didn't get it read.
You're, I'll call you back again, then. I need Catalina Gallagher.
You said my name earlier.
Right. First, I'm going to take Catalina Gallagher, then I'll come back through those other cards. Catalina Gallagher, you're next, followed by Felix Allen.
Hello again.
Hello.
I was looking up the meaning of the word germane, and one of the definitions was having appropriateness to a particular situation or circumstance. So being that the circumstance is that we are witnessing an unprecedented genocide of the Palestinian people, and our country is complicit in it, I believe it's completely appropriate to the circumstance to try to interrupt business as usual in order to get our elected officials to finally give a shit about their own constituents. I'm sorry, I'm very, very tired of watching Palestinian community members come in here and beg you to care about Palestinian life. Beg you, and you say nothing. It's disheartening, but it's also inspiring because it makes me want to get a little more involved in local politics. That's all I'm going to say. Goodbye.
Fatima Khan, please. And there's one other person. I cannot understand this head right. It was like an Evan, maybe? Okay, after her. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Fatima Khan. I live in New Orleans. I'm in District B. I wanted to speak on the food, the New Orleans Food Policy Action Council and the resolution that this council has decided to sit, to make applauding their actions. It's not a difficult thing to make a resolution about what our values are as a city. It's abundantly clear that it's important to do that, otherwise we can exist as a fascist state without clearing to our communities what we stand for. Similarly, I just wanted to make a comment on resolutions generally. It makes no sense why procedurally we are begging and asking for a resolution, we're asking for what should be on the agenda as the people of New Orleans. And it makes no sense that we cannot just write a resolution and put it on the agenda. So that is why we are here. Or if there is, please tell me. I would actually like to know, because the way that the city's rules are written, it does not provide us an opportunity to say what the people want. And as your elections come up, I think that we will hear that and we will make that known.
My name is Evan Michel. I live on 1211 Dante Street. I support the city's endorsement of the New Orleans Food Policy Action Council in promoting equitable access to healthy food. As we address food justice locally, we must also condemn forced starvation and food insecurity echoing the struggles faced by Palestinians under genocide. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes statements. There are some online statements.
Would you, there are online comments, so I'm happy just to include them in the record as we're almost at the end of our time.
We can include those for the record. Thank you. With that, I will move to adopt. Can I get a second? We are short a quorum. All right. Please vote your machines. Vote your machines. Okay, five yeas, no nays. Motion is adopted. Thank you.
At the bottom of page 31, ordinance calendar number 34,686 by council members Jeruso, Moreno, Morrell, Harris, King, Green, and Thomas. In ordinance to amend and re-adjain, ordinance number 29,565, MCS requiring contact information be included on the rowwork.nola.gov website to further require that such information be hyperlinked and searchable and otherwise to provide respect thereto.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Members, remember that we put online the ability for residents to see project managers, both of the city and of construction crews, to get their contact information. I will not say it was bad faith, but when it was posted, it's in a PDF format that is not easily searchable and very cumbersome. So all we're doing is amending it to make sure that it's searchable electronically. Thank you for everybody for supporting. I'll move for approval. Second by Councilmember Harris. Five yeas. Thank you, everybody.
At the top of page 40, resolution number 24,252 by council members Moreno and Morrell, establishing the application deadline for Caesar's New Orleans Casino Community Support Grant in the City Council Cox Communications Louisiana Community Grant is Friday, July 19, 2024, and all applications shall be submitted through the council's website at council.nola.gov.
Thank you. This simplifies the application deadline for the Caesar's Community Support Grant System, and those submissions shall be due to the council website. The deadline is July 19, 2024. I'll move to adopt. Second by Councilmember Jeruso, please vote your machines. Five yeas, no nays. It is adopted.
At the top of page 36, we have motion 24,244 by council member Moreno by request.
Thank you. First, I will add myself to this item. Second, this is...
Excuse me, Council, we need to suspend 57.
Yep. I will move to suspend the rules. Can I get a second? Second by Councilmember Harris. Ms. King, please vote your machines. Do we have a quorum? Yes, we do. Five yeas, no nays. And then we also need to suspend to add it to the agenda, correct?
It's already on. We just suspended it to go because it didn't go to committee.
Okay. Thank you. So this item, the Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality's administering funds to the Volkswagen Trust Fund, which is created in part from the settlement of the Volkswagen's violation of the Clean Air Act, the jury of the funds, you want, all right, Mr. Jarvis, why don't you explain what this does? Thank you.
Sure thing. Thank you, Councilmember. Good afternoon, Council. My name is Dan Jottress with the Office of Resilience and Sustainability. This motion is in regards to authorizing an agreement between the city and the Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality. It would be for $95,000 coming to the city as part of the Volkswagen Trust Fund settlement from their Clean Air Act violation several years ago. The city will be using that funding in furtherance of goals in our climate action plan, specifically in this case to install electric vehicle charging infrastructure. That's the quick summary. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. The board is clear. There is one comment from Elizabeth Holder.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. As we contemplate the contract to increase electric vehicle usage in our city, it's imperative to acknowledge the broader environmental concerns facing communities worldwide. Those who are enduring environmental degradation like Rafa, Gaza, we are transitioning to cleaner transportation locally is commendable, but we must recognize the urgent need for global environmental stewardship. Therefore, alongside authorizing this contract, let's also prioritize passing a city, city council, let's, let's, let's put a ceasefire resolution on the table. Free Palestine. Thank you.
Thank you. The board is clear. I will move to adopt. Can I get a second? Second by Councilmember King, please vote your machines. Please vote your machines. Missing someone? All right, five yeas, no nays. It is adopted. Last up, we have a motion, number M24, 249, number 20.
Yeah, by council member Morrell, amending and restating the council rules and regulations, amend rule 57 to read as follow. And it's been posted on the agenda. You want to read it?
Nope, don't need to read it. Essentially, what this does is it simply requires that we attach copies of the responses received that consider pursuant to the competitive selection process and the corresponding score sheet submitted for each evaluation of the committee members. I will move to adopt. Second by Councilmember Harris, please vote your machines. Five yeas, no nays. The rule is adopted. We will now stand at ease.
At the top of page 30.
Yep, you're good.
At the top of page 30, legislative grouping, ordinance calendar number 34,385 by council members Morrell, Moreno, Harris, and Green. This has been deferred to the meeting of 6:20. Motion line over, M23,426. This has been deferred to the meeting of 6:20. Motion line over, M23,427, has been deferred to the meeting of 6:20. At the top of page 33, we have resolution line over, R2495. This is being deferred to the meeting of 4:20. At the bottom of page 37, we have motion M24,248 by council member Thomas by request. This has been deferred to 6:20 and referred to the Department of Public Works.
Councilman Thomas, may I have a very brief moment of personal privilege?
Yes, Mr. Valentine.
I'll keep it extremely brief. House Bill 461 passed. House Bill 461, if you read it carefully, is basically about RDNI. RDNI does not have to tell us anything. It is engaged in negotiations, so I will never be able to find out whether we did or did not have a earlier request for affordable housing that was turned down and are operating on a second request for only 300 affordable housing units instead of 450. This House Bill 461 will sunset clause in 2028. Between now and then, I will have no information, only paranoid assumptions that I cannot prove or disprove. So all I can say about it is events seem to be shrinking my ability to access actual information and read things for myself, which leaves me either what I have been told verbally or what my paranoid mind comes up with on its own. So I would like to just say that I was against House Bill 461 and regret its passage. Thank you.
All right. I will move to ordinances on first read.
Listen, before we do that, I'm not trying to pull the fast one. We still will discuss, that's his clean zone.
At the end.
After first read.
After first read.
Not trying to pull the fast one on anyone.
All right. Second by Councilmember King, please vote your machines. Thank you. Five yeas, move to ordinances on first read.
Ordinances on first reading. Ordinance calendar number 34,693 by council member Thomas. In ordinance to establish a conditional use to permit a wireless telecommunications tower exceeding 125 feet in height and a VIP business industrial park district on Square D, Lot 3, New Orleans East Industrial Center subdivision in the 3rd Municipal District founded by Mishu Boulevard, Shephard Highway, and Old Gentilly Road. The municipal address is 4201 Mishu Boulevard, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto 2 zoning docket number 3324. Ordinance calendar number 34,694 by council member Jeruso. In ordinance to effect a zoning change from an HURD2 historic urban 2-family residential district to an HUB1 historic urban neighborhood business district and a conditional use to permit a reception facility on Square 556, Lot 2, in the 7th Municipal District founded by Edenberg Street, Eagle Street, General Agent Street, and Palm Street. The municipal addresses are 8801 Edenberg Street and 3510 Eagle Street, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto zoning docket number 3524. Ordinance calendar number 34,695 by council member Harris by request. In ordinance to authorize the mayor of the city of New Orleans to enter into a contract of lease with the SLS Studios LOC for a portion of the St. Thomas Street public right-of-way located in the 1st Municipal District, being a portion of St. Thomas Street between Richard Street and Market Street, and to fix the monthly rent in terms of said lease to declare that such land to be leased is not needed for public purposes, and to set forth the reasons for said lease of land and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number 34,696 by council member Jeruso. In ordinance to ratify and confirm the temporary waiver of certain fees, permit fees, and requirements within and around Marcellus Harmony Park and City Park in conjunction with the Arts Council of New Orleans, Arts Market of New Orleans events on March 9, 2024, March 30, 2024, April 6, 2024, April 27, 2024, May 11, 2024, and May 5, 25, 2024, to ratify and confirm the duration of bond re- to set waiver and to provide otherwise with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number 34,697 by council member Green. In ordinance to establish a conditional use to permit a bed and breakfast accessory in an HURD2 historic urban 2-family residential district on Square 54, Lot 15, in the 2nd Municipal District founded by Domain, North Prairie, St. Anne, and North Johnson Streets. The municipal address is 2028 Domain Street, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto zoning docket number 3724. Ordinance calendar number 34,698 by council members Thomas and Green by request. In ordinance to authorize the mayor of the city of New Orleans to enter into amendment number 3 to a previously executed Cooperative Endeavor Agreement, CEA, between the city of New Orleans, the city, and the Sewage and Water Board of New Orleans, SNWB. Relative to the planning and construction of a new SNWB electric substation at the SNWB's Carrollton Campus, to modify the provisions thereof as more fully set forth in the amendment number 3 form attached here to as exhibit 1, and made a part hereof and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number 34,699 by council member Harris by request. In ordinance to authorize the mayor of the city of New Orleans to enter into an agreement to grant a servitude to an adjacent property owner for encroachments on or over portions of public right-of-way located at the municipal address 3401 St. Charles Avenue to fix the minimum price in terms of said servitude agreement to declare that such use is granted in the servitude agreement while incorporating space that is neither needed for public purposes nor shall such use interfere with the use of the public right-of-way, to set forth the reasons for said servitude agreement and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number 34,700 by council member King by request. In ordinance to authorize the mayor of the city of New Orleans to enter into an agreement to grant a servitude to an adjacent property owner for encroachments on or over portions of public right-of-way located at the municipal address 940 Frenchman Street, to fix the minimum price in terms of said servitude agreement to declare that such use is granted in the servitude agreement while incorporating space that is neither needed for public purposes nor shall such use interfere with the use of the public right-of-way, to set forth the reasons for said servitude agreement and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number 34,701 by council member Harris by request. In ordinance to authorize the mayor of the city of New Orleans to enter into an agreement to grant a servitude to an adjacent property owner for encroachments on over portions of public right-of-way located at the municipal address 524 Street, to fix the minimum price in terms of said servitude agreement to declare that such use is granted in the servitude agreement while incorporating space that is neither needed for public purposes nor shall such use interfere with the use of the public right-of-way, to set forth the reasons for said servitude agreement and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number 34,702 by council member Harris by request. In ordinance to authorize the mayor of the city of New Orleans to enter into an agreement to grant a servitude to an adjacent property owner for encroachments on and over portions of public right-of-way located at the municipal address 1525 Pretanius Street, to fix the minimum price in terms of said servitude agreement to declare that such use is granted in the servitude agreement while incorporating space that is neither needed for public purposes nor shall such use interfere with the use of the public right-of-way, to set forth the reasons for said servitude of the public right-of-way, to set forth the reasons for said servitude agreement and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance Calendar Number thirty-four thousand seven hundred three by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request, an ordinance to amend ordinance number twenty-nine thousand seven hundred thirty-six MCS as amended, entitled, "An Ordinance Providing An Operating Budget of Expenditures for the City of New Orleans for the Year Twenty Twenty Four, To Move Funds From Appropriation Two Hundred Other Operating to One Hundred Personal Services For A Full-Time Code Enforcement Officer In The French Quarter Development District And Otherwise To Provide With Respect Thereto." Ordinance Calendar Number thirty-four thousand seven hundred four by Councilmember Jeruso, an ordinance to amend ordinance number twenty-nine thousand seven hundred thirty-six MCS as amended, entitled, "An Ordinance Providing An Operating Budget of Expenditures For The City Of New Orleans For The Year Twenty Twenty Four, To Transfer Appropriation Within The City Council From The Board Of Review To The Council Central Office For The Cost Of An Additional Attorney Position And Otherwise To Provide With Respect Thereto." Ordinance Calendar Number thirty-four thousand seven hundred five by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request, an ordinance to amend and reordain ordinance number twenty-nine thousand seven hundred thirty-seven MCS, entitled, "An Ordinance Providing A Capital Budget For The Year Twenty Twenty Four, To Effect The Following Change To The Twenty Twenty Four Capital Budget, To Deappropriate Funds From The Chief Administrative Office, The Department Of Parks And Parkwayes, The Department Of Public Works, The New Orleans Police Department, The New Orleans Recreation Development Commission, And The New Orleans Health Department, To Appropriate Funds To The Chief Administrative Office, The Department Of Parks And Parkwayes, The Department Of Property Management, The Department Of Public Works, The New Orleans Fire Department, The Department, The New Orleans Library, Public Library, The New Orleans Police Department, The New Orleans Recreation Development Commission, And The Stormwater And Green Infrastructure Department, And Otherwise To Provide Respect Thereto." Ordinance Calendar Number thirty-four thousand seven oh six by Councilmembers Green and Moreno by request, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of New Orleans and Save Our Soul Coalition for a term greater than one year for the public purpose of supporting the redevelopment of municipal auditorium and Louis Armstrong Park in the City of New, and more fully detailed in the cooperative endeavor agreement attached here too as Exhibit Eight and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance Calendar Number thirty-four thousand seven oh seven by Councilmember King by request, an ordinance to amend and reordain Section ten dash one sixty of the Code of the City of New Orleans relative to fines and penalties to incorporate changes to LARS thirty-three thirteen seventy-five as amended by twenty twenty-three LAX Number three oh four HB two seven six, including an increase of the maximum monetary penalty and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. That concludes the ordinances on first reading.
All right, thank you. And now we'll go back to Councilmember King's item.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Council President Morell. Um, Mr. Swinsett, the floor is yours.
Certainly, I'm going to walk us through what we're going to do here. I believe when-
Work quick, do we provide copies to the public?
I've not been able to print them yet, so unfortunately, I'm going to have to read them aloud and explain what they do.
And we'll have some afterwards for the public.
Certainly.
Sure, thank you.
Uh, when we left, we had a, an amendment on the floor. The first thing that we're going to do is withdraw that amendment. Um, just want to make, take care of that, and then I'm going to read a new amendment into the record. This is an amendment by Councilmember King. This is, this is an amendment to reduce the boundaries of the clean zone, to eliminate the authority of Essence Festival relative to approving permits but to require consultation, to provide relative to existing permit holders. I'm going to read the language into the record, and then I will explain what the different amendments do. Amendment number one, in the preamble, lines ten through twelve, delete the words Burgundy Street, Cluett Street, St. Claude Avenue, Montague Street, North Rampart Street, St. Rock Avenue, St. Claude Avenue, Spain Street, North Rampart Street, Esplanade Avenue. On page two, after the sixth recital, add the words, "Whereas the City of New Orleans and Essence Festival desire to support local minority and women-owned businesses." Amendment number three, in Section One, lines five through seven, delete the words Burgundy Street, Cluett Street, St. Claude Avenue, Montague Street, North Rampart Street, St. Rock Avenue, St. Claude Avenue, Spain Street, North Rampart Street, Esplanade Avenue. Number four, on page three, in Section Three, on line two, delete the words "and Essence." On page, this is amendment number five, on page three, in Section Three, on line nine, insert the following after the word "way," unless currently operating pursuant to a valid and existing permit. On page four, in Section Three, delete lines nineteen through twenty-one and renumber the remaining sections accordingly. Number seven, on page four, in Section Three, delete "except for those authorized by Essence" and insert the following and "leu thereof," provided nothing herein shall require the removal of existing signage. Number eight, on page four, in Section Three, delete "except for those authorized by Essence" on line thirty-seven. Finally, amendment nine, on page three, after Section Three, insert the following and renumber the remaining sections accordingly. Section four, before exercising its permitting authority under Section Three, the city shall consult with Essence Festival regarding any impacts a requested permit may have on the event, provided nothing herein shall give Essence the right to deny or reject any permit application. Nothing in this ordinance shall grant the city any right to authorize the use of intellectual property belonging to or in connection with Essence Festival, nor shall the issuance of a permit hereunder constitute an authorization or license to use same. Essentially, what these do, um, this shrinks the footprint of the clean zone in accordance with, uh, what was discussed in Councilmember King's original amendment. We have eliminated the authority of Essence in Section Three to, uh, approve permits. We have also made clear that the prohibition in Section Three B that says you can't transact any business on the public sidewalks or right-of-way, that does not include those who are currently operating pursuant to a permit. So we're not looking to undo existing going concerns. Next, we have prohibited the, or we've eliminated the provision that says any permits are rescinded. If you have a permit, you may continue to operate as you do. Finally, as to the general advertising requirements, so that we don't expect people to strip down their signs, we've added language that nothing herein shall require the removal of existing, uh, signage. And then, uh, we've also eliminated the authority of Essence to authorize inflatables, cold air balloons, what have you. And then lastly, we've inserted a provision that basically says that the city nevertheless should consult with Essence so that Essence is aware of any potential infringing, uh, uses and, but we're not bound by, by kind of how they feel about it. And finally, we don't have the authority to grant any right to use Essence's intellectual property, uh, in any way, and that's the amendment.
All right. Um, thank you, Mr. Swinsett. I know we have some comments, some, um, comment cards. Uh, Mr. Burnside, you're up. You're going to keep everybody to two minutes? Oh. He just, he just gave a card.
On the amendment. So for me, the amendment's very important. It's not a small thing because it demonstrates the power of writing. This is where the power of the lawyer lies, in the pen. And who writes things matters a great deal. So one of my ongoing arguments with you, the council, is you have too small staff. JP and I were in his office. We were talking about too small staff. I'm not going to beat the drum too hard right now, but the bottom line is you don't need just staff who can read stuff. You need staff who can write stuff. And one of my ongoing disagreements with Councilperson Harris with RDNI is that we gave up the right to write anything. RDNI gets the right to write, and we don't. And I see this again and again, where we are reacting to the writing of others, and the others are intelligent, hardworking lawyers who are paid money to write things for their client. They're not middlemen who are trying to balance the community's desires or anything else. We need a stronger legislature. We need a stronger legislative body. You need to hire auditors. You need to hire accountants. You need to hire a couple more lawyers so that a couple individuals doesn't carry the whole weight. And you need to become co-equal in the money you spend on yourselves and stop doing stuff on the cheap.
Thank you, Mr. Burnside. Ms. Emily? Pause. Ms. Emily? Is Emily? Again, this is on the amendment.
So Emily Posner, General Counsel here on behalf of Voice of the Experience. We have a lot of concerns. It seems like some of them have been addressed with the amendment. It was very difficult to discern the amendment without a paper copy, so I would like a clarification if Section Three B has been modified at all. It's just a one-sentence line that says, "No person shall transact any business upon the public street sidewalks or right-of-way."
It has. Uh, there is a carve-out for those who are currently operating pursuant to a valid and existing permit.
And so I think our biggest problem as, um, as a nonprofit organization that does have commercial and business, um, activities associated with our work is that there's no definition of what business upon the public street sidewalks and rights-of-way means. Um, and so, and if we have a group of people that are canvassing in that area with bumper stickers or with stickers and, uh, that's vote-related, and we pass that information out with a QR code related to our nonprofit organization, will we be in violation of that Clean Zone Act? Um, with no definition of what business means, we think that that is an overly broad definition, and it needs to be addressed, or at least, um, specifically carved out that people who are exercising their First Amendment right and their right to peaceful assembly and their right to talk to people on the street, that, that our actions are not being criminalized. And this would directly impact the work that our organization does.
Mr. Swinsett, I asked for a clarification really quickly. Um, when you're handing out bumper stickers, are you required to get a permit to do that?
You're not. I don't think you can constitutionally.
So if you're not required to get a permit to currently do it, then it would not be impacted by the law regardless.
But this, that's not, this says, you didn't take this language out.
The language says that you cannot conduct business. If you are an organization that is not currently required to get a permit to do your constitutionally protected behavior, this does not create a new onerous requirement. If you're not required to get a permit in the first place, how could you be blocked from getting a permit? My question. Because when you're exercising your First Amendment right to canvas or hand out bumper stickers by a nonprofit, not-for-profit, you're not required currently to get a permit.
I understand exactly what you're saying, Councilmember Morell. However, people have been arrested in the past doing that specific activity during French Quarter Fest, and unless this ordinance is clarifying that, it's overly broad and will encompass our protected speech. I don't think the language that you've all articulated does that. That's our concern.
Okay. I appreciate your concern. Thank you.
Thank you. And any, any other public comment? Okay. It's time, it's time to make, this time to make a motion. This is, this is on the amendment. This, this is on the amendment. It's on the amendment. Second by Councilmember Moreno. All right, okay, so we have four yeas. Gotcha, we got you. Five, five. Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Five yeas, one recusal. Got it. Thank you. All right, now, Mr. Swinsett?
Councilmember Harris, can you, uh, state your reasons for recusal for the record?
I've represented, represented Essence Festival as a lawyer in the past.
There's public comment on the ordinance as amended as appropriate.
Public comment on the ordinance as amended, Mr. Ethan, Ethan Esslet, Ellis said. I know we have Mr. Norris Henderson, Ms. Ruby. So we'll go in that order. Ethan, Henderson.
Hey, good afternoon, counsel. I'll be brief. Ethan Ellis, City Music Culture Coles of New Orleans, twenty-five thirty-three Columbus. Um, I know there's been a lot. One thing, I just wanted to, to point out, you know, a lot of this language has been kind of rote language, has been put in clean zones in the past and just kind of got passed through the next one, um, without real examination. I think clearly with some examination, you can see that there were some real issues that popped up. So I think it really points to the importance of public input, public comment, to make sure we could have caught some of these before we got to this point. Um, the other thing I just want to address really quickly, um, I know we just talked about the First Amendment, and, and street musicians come up a lot. And one of the challenges that we have is even though street musicians don't need to get a permit, often they're told that they, um, need to get a permit to conduct business in order to be, uh, performing on the street, which is not true, and occasionally have been charged for that. And so one of my concerns is with this additional language and someone coming in that doesn't know the law well, uh, with, you know, new enforcement agencies, et cetera, coming in and creating that conflict, um, with this clean zone, I think it's much more likely that will happen over this week than it has in other times with additional enforcement, new people coming in, and with the context of additional laws being passed at legislature that really impact culture and enforcement in public space, the twenty-five-foot rule for, um, for, for, uh, cameras, um, you know, the anti-panhandling laws, all those things can really impact what's going to happen here, and these may well be in effect by the time this clean zone happens. So I want to call that out because it's something we may have to deal with, and I mean, here I'll help to figure that out. Um, and also in upcoming clean zones as well, certainly the Super Bowl, et cetera, those are going to be real and ongoing concerns. So I want to flag that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. Mr. Norris Henderson.
Good afternoon. Uh, my biggest concern is different. I'm not a kind of like traditional business owner because I don't sell goods, but I organize in this city, and our organization sees opportunities like this where thousands of Afro-Americans are coming in this community, and our job is to register them and vote. And so we would have literally hundreds of people on the street in this so-called clean zone pushing people to register the vote, to turn out the vote. We pay for billboards. Our biggest billboard is that the clay bone fly over that's face the Superdome. And so you're telling us, some of our people drive Uber and Lyft, and we do all kinds of outreach during this time of the year, especially given what's going on in November. And so we need to find out, and Emily kind of asked a question about, our business is the business of contacting and interacting with people. And all of our literature have a QR code on it that give people an opportunity to contact us, and inside that QR code, we act for donations. And so where do we fit in the grand scheme of things? Because trust me, we will be out there. Come hook a crook, we will be out there. And so we just trying to get a sense of, do we need to get bail bond money already now, or what?
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Uh, you do not need to get bail, bail bond money. No, you don't, you don't need to get it. No, no, you won't have to get it or use it. Um, based off what we've been told, passing out push cars, passing out flyers, passing out information is not in, uh, against the clean zone. You definitely can do that. You want to come back to the, come back to the mic? I can't, I can't hear you.
The lady who was sitting here left, and one of the first things she opened our conversation with was about black culture and black enterprise in this city. And I remember after Katrina, they went to Houston, and Essence fell on his face. So we bring something to the table also. It's not like they're just bringing something to the table. We bring something where this is the only walking city in this country where people can have an event, and people can walk from their hotel to the event and back. And so I don't think we need to compromise our position. We have mighty ground. We have the best controlled event, you know, to the crack of the police department, uh, the best in this country in the sense of crowd control. And clean zone used to be proximate to the event, like right near that little event. But we didn't stretch halfway across the city to shut people down. And like Councilman Thomas said earlier, the people who are not inside that clean zone, it's not us. It's not us. So if Essence is coming to be a party with a purpose for black folks to kind of like come up, this is not it. This is definitely not it. And we should hang up a "Not For Sale" sign on the door and saying, "I appreciate your, your amendment about, we need to just, like a word search and replace everywhere Essence is at, giving them authority to do something. Need to replace it with the city council." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Um, Ms. Garcia, Ms. Garcia? After Ms. Garcia, are there any other comment cards that I'm overlooking? DJ, I got you. After DJ, okay, so we have two more after, three more after Ms. Garcia.
I had a nicer message up until you carried Byron's wife out this morning, so I'm going to say it and just stick to it. "I'm here to speak in my personal capacity in opposition to the Clean Zone Act. My reasoning is because I have personally witnessed this city council exhibit a history of chilling free speech and selling its people to corporate interests, whether that potentially be this legislation to the NFL, RDNI via Leslie, uh, or the reason why I busted out the tarp the last time I was here. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to be here to plead to your moral compass, because the last time I did that, I ended up catching two felonies for protesting that corporate greed, corruption, and inhumanity. That said, I know firsthand you don't care about the Palestinian supporters who have been here begging for you to put it on the agenda, even though we've had enough people killed to fill the entire Smoothie King Center." killed to fill the entire Smoothie King Center of women and children, because that's 6,000 miles away whenever 0.6 miles from where I'm standing right now, you left black and brown bodies hanging from the Hard Rock for over 300 days. So, and that's one of the most capitalistic displays of lynchings that I, as a historian, have ever been able to witness. The Act as written gives legislative authority to a private entity and once again prioritizes corporate interests over the rights of locals, and it criminalizes their livelihood in a state that has taken over 20,000 years already in wrongful convictions. As if that isn't enough, let's not forget that you all watched just a couple of months ago, just a month ago, as Campus PD, NOPD, LSPD violently descended to chill the speech of students and staff who were doing that which you have been unable to do and find the gumption to do because everybody has said, Joe, that they are all defaulting to you, and I cannot wait. I wish that I could be a fly on the pearly gates of heaven as everyone here who has collectively said they've all defaulted to you. I'm wondering at one, I wish that I could be there at that point in time as they tried to explain to St. Peter. Either one, why you have not put the ceasefire resolution on the agenda, and two, why you continually, repeatedly, this city council seem to not grasp the concept of you work for us, you are there representing us. This is a very simple concept across the board. That being said, I appreciate the time. I'll reserve the rest of my time. Do not pass this act with the amendments as it is. I would suggest that you have a hearing because I graduated from law school in a year, and I could tell that you dang sure didn't, right? And I don't know who the heck did, but they need to go back to law school.
No, all I was going to say is, as we go back, one of the things Mr. Henderson pointed out, and as we look at this in the future, is this is meant to do with commercial speech, and what Mr. Henderson's talking about is First Amendment public speech. And so there shouldn't be any issue with First Amendment public speech as opposed to commercial speech. And so as we work at clean zones in the future, we will make sure that clarity is added to the point that you made today. I think, I think the clean zone right now does not prohibit what you are talking about, but I want to make sure that the point you raised today is adequately addressed between those two concepts.
All right, we had, thank you, Councilmember Jeruso. We have two more comments, two more comments. I don't have a card, but I saw two hands in the audience. So can you please come up to the mic, these two young ladies, or two speakers?
Hi, this is Fatma. I live in District B. I'm also a lawyer. I just want to echo what Emily was saying, like you can't, anything can be business, and to not say that this is commercial business also impacts things such as First Amendment. And the people who are enforcing this are not us, they're police officers trying to interpret the rules, and we have seen that they will not, they can often interpret things that are First Amendment activities as against the law. I want to direct y'all's attention to section 12, which has a carve-out for public participation areas, and it says that they shall allow for reasonable expression by the public in a manner that is not disruptive to the Essence Festival. I ask, why is it important that it's not disruptive to the Essence Festival? If it comes to First Amendment speech, it's not whether it's disruptive to the festival because if there was someone disrupting the festival, that would be disruptive to them. It's the council that should decide that, and that is just one of the many concerns in this legislation that attacks free speech. And as a lawyer, I'm concerned, as a person who protests for Palestine, I'm concerned this is a legislation that does not have a good understanding of what is business and what is free speech and what is protective activity, and I would really urge y'all to take a minute, have a lawyer look at it, to protect yourselves from lawsuits.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. And then DJ will wrap up with you, so you'd be our next and last public commenter.
My name's Devor Levy Perlman, constituent in District B. I am very much opposed to this proposed ordinance. Quite frankly, I think this ordinance is frightening because what we're doing is we're turning this city into a profit-making playground. This is supposed to be a city for the people of New Orleans, and instead, we're looking at a sterilized zone covering a huge swath of the city that would shut down public space effectively. I mean, this is frightening. This is fascistic, and I don't mean to be hyperbolic, but it really is because you're selling out the city to corporations. And I really want to echo the gentleman who spoke earlier, who asked the question, who runs this city? Who runs this city? Is it us? Is it the people? Is it, you know, do we have us and the people and representatives who are responsive to us, or is it big corporations? And so I think we're moving towards a really alarming state of affairs where governing bodies in this country are completely subservient to private capital. We cannot sell our city out to these big out-of-town business interests. It's an attack on our public spaces, and as many have mentioned, it's going to disproportionately impact black and brown communities. They're putting up more and more barriers for people to live in the city. We're putting more and more people, poor people, working-class people in a chokehold, putting gig workers in a chokehold, putting street vendors in a chokehold, putting struggling small business owners in a chokehold, putting artists in a chokehold. This city is putting working-class people in one big straitjacket meant to debilitate them. I hear some people talking about, oh, benefits for the economy, benefits for business, but whose economy are we talking about? Councilmember Thomas said there's a lot more money that's flowing through this city than is actually staying in this city, and I completely agree with that. We need money to stay here. We need to see benefits, actual material benefits to our people here in New Orleans. So you have a choice right now. You have a choice. Are you going to stand with big, greedy corporate interests, or are you going to stand with the people of New Orleans? And so we shouldn't just strike one section here, one piece of this ordinance here. We need to strike the whole thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And lastly, Mr. Johnson. Follow Mr. Johnson's, two minutes, we'll vote on the ordinance as amended.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Just wanted to ask a question in regard to section six. It says, no other outdoor events or festivals open to the public shall be permitted by to take place in a clean zone area during the dates of Essence Festival, Monday, July 1 through July 8. In regards to Ms. Jenkins, her comments regarding the Riverwalk, I don't necessarily think that it's right for her or for anyone who wants to host an outdoor event to have to go to Essence and ask them for permission. So I was just wondering if that's something that can be reconsidered, something that maybe in the amendment can also be provided on, and that's section six where it says no other outdoor events. It just restricts, it's a gross use of, I should say, misuse of authority. So I just wanted to know if that would be considered. I encourage you all, I just want to personally say that I enjoy Essence, I think the city enjoys Essence, for the most part, everyone enjoys Essence. We want Essence here. We just don't want it at the marginalization and disenfranchisement of local businesses. But everyone welcomes Essence. We enjoy it. It's a great time, and they've done a lot of wonderful things in the city throughout the years. It's just that we don't want local businesses to be marginalized and disenfranchised, and their business activities to now be criminalized. That's what the ask is, but it's not to not have Essence here, it's just making sure that it's done in a fair and equitable manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All right, this time make a vote, make a call of vote, please. A vote on the ordinance as amended, second by Councilmember Jeruso. Four yeas, one recusal, no nays. Thank you. Five, I'm sorry, five yeas, five yeas. Thank you. At this time make a motion to adjourn. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.